Well, that was really neat. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to Thousand Oaks for the City Council Meeting of June 23rd. Will you all please stand and join me in pledging allegiance to our flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation, under God, liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Fox.
Here.
Councilmember Bill De La Peña.
Present.
Councilmember Irwin.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tim Gillette is absent this evening. Mayor Glancy.
Here. Thank you very much. Request for a continuance of any public hearings or agenda items. We have none. Oh, we don't. Pardon me. Councilmember Bill De La Peña.
Thank you. Just briefly, with Councilmember Dennis Gillette absent this evening, and we are going to hear the film permit later on this evening, I know he felt very strongly about the film permit and making any changes to it. I'm asking whether we should wait until he gets back for him to weigh in, or...
No.
No?
No. I spoke with Councilmember Gillette before he left, and what he said was when this ordinance comes up, what he's looking for is something that's reasonable, yet has a little bit more flexibility to it. So I don't think he would be distressed at all by the proposition as proposed.
Very well. Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay, now is the time for special presentation, so give me a minute. I'll walk down to the podium. That's enough. For our first presentation this evening, I'd like to have our city clerk, Linda Lawrence, join me up here. And I would like to read a letter that you received from the California City Clerks Association of California. Each year, the President of the City Clerks Association of California has the privilege of acknowledging city clerks for outstanding service in a variety of categories such as public relations, administration and communications, legislative procedures, community service, humanitarian, elections and records management. Linda Lawrence has been recognized for a 2008-09 President's Award of Distinction for her work in elections and voter outreach. Linda conducted the acceptance of petitions and processing for a ballot initiative which ultimately did not require a vote, a special election regarding another ballot initiative and a regular municipal election. During the election process, Linda was an active participant in Ventura County's program to allow drop-off vote by mail ballots at various localities. So congratulations to Linda for this accomplishment. Certificate of recognition presented to Linda Lawrence, M.M.C., in honor and acknowledgement of your professional achievements and outstanding service in the area of election and voter outreach. You have the power of W.I.N.E., wisdom, integrity, neutrality and ethics. Signed, Margaret Roberts. Again, congratulations, Linda.
Thank you.
Congratulations. Wonderful. Okay, for our second presentation tonight, we have some outstanding students from Thousand Oaks High School, I believe. Looks like it. Who are recognized for their sports victories through their hard work and dedication. They have excelled, and tonight is my pleasure to recognize and congratulate the Thousand Oaks Boys Tennis Team for winning their CIF Southern Section Title. So tonight, the team will receive a commendation and a brass leaf which is engraved with their accomplishment and will be hung on the sports tree located in the first floor. Coach Asorsen.
First of all, thank you for recognizing our team this year. We were very proud to represent the City of Thousand Oaks in the tennis this year, and in thinking about it a little bit, I kind of liken our victory in this CIF Division One tennis, a little on a smaller scale, of course, sort of like winning the NBA Championship, which I know is very, very tough. And this was a very tough job, and these boys really did an excellent job this year. We had a goal from the very beginning to try to win this thing, and in other years, why, it's been pretty much a mission impossible to do it because the teams out there are so good. So anyhow, as far as I know, this is the first team from Ventura County that has ever won a CIF Division One Tennis Title, and so we're very proud and thrilled to be here. In addition to the team tennis title, I was going to mention that we have eight schools in the Maramonte League, which of course, we were first, and then in the CIF, we're talking 500 or more schools that are entered in this tournament. So that's to give you a little bit idea of what we were up against. Anyhow, we have, in addition to our team championship, two of our boys won the CIF Doubles Championship for the second straight year, which is almost as hard as winning the team thing. And we have one of the boys is here, the other boy, Dennis Lin, is traveling to a state playing in another tennis tournament, but his partner is here tonight, and that's Marcos Garan.
Come on over here to this side. Oh, wait a minute. Come on, Marcos. Don't leave, guys. Okay, I'd like to present a couple of commendations. The first, in honor of Marcus Garan, 2009 CIF Doubles Champion. Whereas Marcus Garan, a member of Thousand Oaks High School Boys Tennis Team, represented the Maramonte League in Doubles Championship, and Marcos teamed up with Dennis Lin for the second consecutive year to win this year's CIF Doubles Competition, performing admirably and excelling in this event. They defeated every opponent in straight sets. And Marcos and Dennis won the CIF Southern Section Division One Championships for the second consecutive year. This has only been accomplished five times in CIF history. And Marcos and Dennis, coached by Dave Asorsen, showed their strong commitment to sportsmanship. They demonstrated exemplary athleticism and represented our community with distinction. Now therefore, I, Thomas P. Glancy, Mayor of the City of Thousand Oaks, on behalf of the entire City Council, do hereby commend Marcus Garan and congratulate him, his partner, Dennis Lin, and their coach on winning 2009 CIF Championship. There you go. And there's a commendation here for Dennis also. So Coach, if you'll present that to him when you see him. We certainly appreciate it. Okay, Coach, you're back on.
At this time, I would like to bring the rest of the team up here, being as how it's summer vacation and all, why, we've got people strung out different places, but we were able to bring six players with us, and so I'd like to have the guys come on up. Come on right up in here. Okay, starting with Marcos here, I'd like to introduce, we have Marcos Garan, and we have Matt Skorazynski in the blue, Brendan Josephson next to him, Benjamin Moon, Greg Wise, and Michael Kounisaki. These boys have been battling all year. It's been a long year for us. Normally, the playoffs start somewhere around the first part of May, and then, you know, after you play a round or two and lose, well, you're gone, but we stayed around for five rounds, and so we're still standing. I'm sorry that the other boys weren't able to be here, but we're going to make sure that they, you know, get whatever is coming to them.
Do you want to do the commendation? Coach, I'll do a commendation in honor of your boys' tennis team. Again, whereas Thousand Oaks High School Boys Tennis Team, representing the Maramonte League, won the CIF Southern Section Division One Tennis Championship in June 2009, and the team had an outstanding 21 wins and one loss during the season, and the team had an impressive league record of 14-0, capturing the league championship for the first time since 1994. And the Thousand Oaks High School Boys Tennis Team won the school's first tennis team title with a 10-8 victory over the top-ranked University High School of Irvine. job every day serving the residents of Thousand Oaks. They're also credited with winning the first tennis team title in Thousand Oaks High School history. Now therefore, I, Thomas P. Glancy, Mayor of the City of Thousand Oaks, on behalf of People in Thousand Oaks hold our public safety people in very high regard, and it's the entire City Council, do hereby commend Thousand Oaks High School Boys Tennis Team a council top priority. In working together with our Thousand Oaks residents, we continue to ensure our community and congratulate the team and their coach on winning the 2009 CIF Championship. is safe, and the record of safety in our community has been absolutely stellar for Congratulations, guys. the last 20 years. We're proud to recognize these two individuals. I'd like to invite Police Chief Jeff Matson to join me. Chief?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of City Council. It is my honor to announce that the Thousand Oaks Police Department has selected Deputy Brent Miller as our St. Pascal's Bayons Officer of the Year, and has also selected Senior Deputy Rick Godfrey as our Kiwanis Officer of the Year. These two members of the Thousand Oaks Police Department are two of our best and brightest. One is just getting started on what will be a great career in law enforcement, and the other deputy is finishing up a career of excellent service to the City of Thousand Oaks and the residents of Ventura County. Deputy Brent Miller has worked for the Ventura County Sheriff's Department for eight years. During that time, Brent has been assigned to the Ventura County Main Jail, the Ventura County Superior Court, and East County Patrol. In each of these three assignments, Brent has done an excellent job. Deputy Miller is a field training officer and currently works as a patrol deputy for the City of Thousand Oaks. It should be noted that we only choose our best people to be field training officers, and Brent is one of our best. Deputy Miller has a Bachelor's of Science degree in criminal justice with a minor in business management from Northern Arizona University. He is married to Jennifer, and they have three daughters, Mackenzie, Sidney and Colleen. Senior Deputy Rick Godfrey has been working and serving the residents of Ventura County for 39 years. He has been assigned to the Thousand Oaks Traffic Bureau for 30 years. He is not only a senior deputy with the Sheriff's Department, but he is the master senior deputy. Rick is responsible for reviewing and approving all traffic collision reports, as well as conducting serious injury and fatal collision investigations. Rick currently coordinates and instructs our department's basic, intermediate, and advanced traffic collision investigation courses. Rick is recognized as a traffic investigation expert, both locally and statewide. He is often sought after by the District Attorney's Office to testify as a traffic investigations expert, and when major crimes needs to have a crime scene reconstructed, Rick is the one they call to produce a computer-driven detail of the area where the crime was committed, allowing the investigators to reconstruct complex crime scenes. Rick is married to his lovely wife, Nola, and they have four daughters, Sarah, Beth, Ruth and Mary. And one of the best things about having Rick as our Officer of the Year is he's actually the first officer of the year that is older than I am. Once again, I would like to thank the city leadership and city staff for the opportunity to recognize these two fine officers publicly, as they truly deserve this honor. Thank you.
Rick is our traffic guru, so we have a special hat for him tonight, too.
Oh, no, you're wearing it. But if you notice, the red, the yellow and the green.
Isn't everybody supposed to stand?
Yeah, they should.
No, no, leave it on gaining to flow. Come on.
There you go.
I had to wear that traffic cone or something.
That's awfully heavy.
Let me soften the embarrassment of that with reading your commendation, Rick. Whereas Rick Godfrey was selected as the recipient of the 2009 Thousand Oaks Police Department's Kiwanis Officer of the Year Award, and Rick was chosen for this honor by his peers because of the outstanding leadership he displays on a daily basis as a senior deputy and senior traffic investigator of the Thousand Oaks Police Traffic Bureau. He has served over 30 years in the Traffic Bureau and is an inspiration to fellow officers. Rick began his law enforcement career in 1971 after completing the Ventura County Sheriff's Academy. He advanced through the rank of deputy by working in a variety of assignments, learning from those experiences and then mentoring other deputies following him. And Rick Godfrey is a 38-year resident of Thousand Oaks. He was promoted to senior deputy in 1976 and is well-respected by his supervisors, peers and subordinates as an effective, responsible, dedicated leader and role model. Now therefore, I, Thomas P. Glancy, Mayor of the City of Thousand Oaks, on behalf of the entire City Council, do hereby congratulate and commend Rick Godfrey, 2009 Thousand Oaks Kiwanis Officer of the Year, and express our deep gratitude for his outstanding efforts and service to our community. Brent, come on up. I'll read your commendation now. Brent Miller was selected as the recipient of the St. Pascal's 2008 Peace Officer of the Year Award, and Brent was chosen for this honor by his supervisors and peers because of the outstanding enthusiasm and motivation he displays on a daily basis. He serves as an inspiration to fellow officers, and Brent began his law enforcement career in 2001 after completing Ventura County Sheriff's Academy. He advanced through his six years assignment in the Sheriff's Detention Services Division, learning from his experiences at the pre-trial detention facility and court services, and then mentoring the deputies that followed him. And in 2007, Brent Miller was assigned to East County Police Services. He is a well-respected field training officer and known to be an effective and dedicated patrol officer in the community he serves. Now therefore, I, Thomas P. Glancy, Mayor of the City of Thousand Oaks, on behalf of the entire City Council, do hereby congratulate and commend Brent Miller, 2008 Peace Officer of the Year, for exemplary service to our citizens, and express our gratitude to him for his efforts in keeping our community peaceful and safe. Congratulations. Thanks, guys. Appreciate it. Take care. Chief, thank you very much. Okay. Our final presentation this evening is an award to be presented to the city by the employer support of the Garden Reserve. The City of Thousand Oaks is a proud supporter of the men and women who serve in our military and our garden reserves. I'd like to introduce Dennis De Noy. Executive Director of ESGR for Southern California, tell us more. We're going to ask Connie Hickman, Human Resource Director, to come to the podium as well. Dennis?
Good evening. As a Southern California Employer Support of the Garden Reserve Executive Director, it is an honor and privilege to represent the Department of Defense and recognize New York City's outstanding efforts to fully support city employees that also serve as productive members of the United States Armed Forces Garden Reserve. The ESGR is a Department of Defense agency that seeks to promote a culture in which all American employers support and value the military service of their employees. We recognize outstanding employer support, increase employer awareness of the federal law Uniform Services Employment and Reemployment Rights Act, U.S.R.A., and resolve employer-employee conflicts remediation. I am here today to express the Department of Defense's appreciation for the outstanding efforts put forth by the Thousand Oaks city leadership on behalf of all city employees currently serving dual careers in the Garden Reserve and also with your proud city. Not only has the city established policies and procedures that protect city employees' jobs and job-related benefits for those employees serving our nation in the Garden Reserve, but many city leaders and city supervisors have taken extra efforts to ensure that these brave men and women, rights are protected, excuse me, these brave men and women protecting our freedoms, know that they are appreciated and that they and their families will be thought of and looked after during the many, long and challenging military deployments. It was this continual efforts and actions of one supervisor, excuse me, Mr. Jeff Ware, the co-compliance manager, whose personal attention to the needs of one of his employees, Mr. Brian Sells, that brought the city's patriotic efforts to the attention of the Secretary of Defense's office. Mr. Ware not only ensured that the employee received all of his rights and enhanced benefits from the city, but he also took a personal interest in the well-being of his employee and the employee's family throughout two extended military deployments since 2003. Because of this city-wide effort to not only follow the law but to exceed it, I have two Department of Defense awards to present to the City of Thousand Oaks tonight. The first award is called "My Boss Is A Patriot Award," and it was the direct efforts of a city employee, Mr. Sells, appreciation for both the city and his supervisor. In the Department of Defense's review of this recommendation for an award, it was felt that the city deserved more than that award alone, and a second award, the Seven Seals Award, is also being presented tonight. So at this time, we'll do the two awards. The National Committee for the Employer Support of the Garden Reserve recognizes the City of Thousand Oaks as a patriotic employer for contributing to national security and protecting liberty and the freedoms by supporting employee participation in America's National Garden Reserve. And it's signed by the National Executive Director and the National Chairman of the ESGR. And the second award, the Second Award, the Seven Seals Award, presented to the City of Thousand Oaks for mayor choice, leadership and initiative in support of the men and women who serve America in the National Garden Reserve, signed by the Assistant Secretary of Defense for Reserve Affairs, Thomas F. Hall. And finally, tonight, for the ESGR's participation, the City of Thousand Oaks is going to reaffirm their continual support for their employees serving the Garden Reserve by signing a statement of support. At this time, the mayor and Connie Hickman, Director of Human Resources, will publicly sign a statement of support here tonight, and then later on, each city department head will sign an individual one and post in their offices.
I'd like to introduce five of our employees who are active reservists. First one is Dustin Hirschman from the Finance Department, who's a sergeant in the U.S. Army Reserve. Dustin, can you stand up? Next, we have Byron Sells from the Community Development Department. Byron is a chief petty officer. Ken McDonald from Community Development, who is a chief petty officer with the Navy Reserve. Andrew Notar from Public Works, who is a master-at-arms petty officer, first class. And last, but certainly not least, Elaine Camia from Public Works, a lieutenant with the U.S. Navy Reserve.
Good evening. I'm Chief Petty Officer McDonald. I'm an obvious City of Employee here, and on behalf of myself and my coworker, Senior Chief Petty Officer Sells, I'd like to express our deep appreciation and thanks to the city for their support of myself and Chief Sells and our family.
Next, we have Byron Sells from the Community Development Department. Byron is a Chief Petty Officer. Ken McDonald from Community Development, who is a Chief Petty Officer with the Navy Andrew Notar from Public Works, who is a Master-at-Arms Petty Officer, first class. And last, but certainly not least, Elaine Camia from Public Works, a Lieutenant with
Good evening. I'm Chief Petty Officer McDonald. I'm an obvious City of Employee here, and on behalf of myself and my coworker, Senior Chief Petty Officer Sells, I'd like to express our deep appreciation and thanks to the city for their support of myself and Chief Sells and our families while on our recent deployment to Iraq and Afghanistan. And as a sign of our appreciation, we'd like to present the city with this flag, which reads, "This United States flag was flown over Al Asad Air Force Base, Iraq, on January 1, 2009, and on February 15, 2009, at Kandahar Airfield, Afghanistan, in support of Operation Iraqi Freedom and Operation Endury Freedom." Flown for the City of Thousand Oaks, thank you for your support, presented by BUC Ken McDonald and BUC Byron Sells, First Naval Construction Regiment. Thank you.
That's one of the nicest things that could be presented. And we thank all of you. We thank all of you for your efforts, what you do, the time you commit, and the job that you accomplish. It's what you do that allows us to have meetings like this. So, thank you. Tonight, we have a special honor to bestow upon one of our city employees, and we wanted to do this in conjunction with the Patriotic Employer Award. Hurry up, Lieutenant. Go catch him. Got him? Okay. I'd like to introduce Commanding Officer Roger Blank, United States Navy, to come to the podium.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. You've got it. Appreciate it.
XO Mass Chief, not only did Chief Sells do outstanding, he was recently selected for promotion to Senior Chief. We'd like to take his time to do that.
From Commanding Officer, Naval Construction Support Unit 2, 2, Brian K. Sells, authority to assume the title and wear the uniform of a Senior Chief Petty Officer. You are hereby authorized to assume the title and wear the uniform of a Senior Chief Petty Officer effective immediately. Your appointment carries with it the obligation that you exercise increased authority and willingly accept greater responsibility. Occupying a position of greater authority, you must strive toward the renewed dedication toward the valued ideal of service with honor. Congratulations, Commanding Officer R.L. Blank.
Congratulations. That's awesome. Thank you. Thank you, guys. Thank you. Thank you. provide to our citizens, and as I've said before, your efforts allow us to do what we do and do it in a public meeting. So, thank you. So, let's continue here. Public comments. Would the city clerk please call public comments?
This is the time and place for public comments. A speaker card is available for those wishing to address the City Council regarding items on the agenda or on a subject within the city's jurisdiction. All speakers for public hearings shall be called and heard during the public hearing. Pursuant to council standards of operation, the mayor may assist any speaker from strain into areas not within the city's jurisdiction. All remarks should be addressed to the council as a whole. Under state law, issues discussed under public comments can have no action unless listed on the agenda and may be referred to the city manager for administrative action or scheduled on a subsequent agenda. All documents for City Council and the official city record should be presented to the city clerk prior to speaking, and speakers are requested to state their name and city of residence for the record. Six people have presented cards and pursuant to council standards, speakers are allowed three minutes. The yellow light displays when you have one minute remaining.
Thank you very much. We have First Speaker Brenda Hunter, followed by Holly Yuhas, followed by Rudy Gonzalez. And I'd ask the subsequent speakers to station themselves down here in these reserved seats that are close to the podium so that we can transition quickly. And please state your name and city of residence. Good evening, Brenda.
Good evening. My name is Brenda Hunter, and I live here in Thousand Oaks. Mayor Glancy and council members, as Neighborhood for Learning Executive Director, I am here to announce the arrival of the Neighborhood City Center for Young Children. It was actually looking at my timeline a year and one day ago that it was taken to closed session to go into partnership with the school district as a public entity to run the state preschool contract and the city center. It has been a year of challenge and planning, obviously with the economic situations, but one of the things that I'm proud of Neighborhood for Learning is that we're able to keep the main thing the main thing, and that is families and children in the community. Looking at the timeline, I'm able to say that we have checked off every single item of the year-long timeline. We obviously, you know, made it through all the negotiations. We sent in the licensing application. We received our license as of the 17th of this month. We have worked with the state to make sure that all the requirements for the state preschool contract is up to speed. We've done job descriptions, policies, manuals, interviews, and we are set to open our doors on July 1st. With that, I will say that it has been a challenging year, but one of great growth and opportunity to stay in integrity and focus on what's best. And I'm really proud, as the Director, to bring the Neighborhood for Learning model in this joint venture with the school district and the City of Thousand Oaks. We've been recognized, from Ventura County, the Neighborhood for Learning model has been recognized nationally by the Kellogg Foundation as one of the top eight programs that provides an integrated system for the community of early learning, family support, and health services for the zero-to-five population. So, I am really honored to be a part of that, to open up the city center and provide those further services. With your help and assistance, we have begun our state preschool services as of the 15th. We opened up the doors of the city center on the July 1st. We are licensed. We've been able to hire eight of the past employees from that center. We have developed and implemented and started our marketing and our fee scales, and as I said, the hiring and the ordering, and we have been working feverishly the last eight days since the 15th to do a massive cleaning and cleanup and getting our orders ready. We are going to have an open house on this Saturday, the 27th, and we do have a packet that we'll send out to you or pass out to you, and we are doing an open house from 11:00 to 2:00, so we hope to see everyone there.
Thank you very much for being with us and for the update. Councilwoman Irwin has a brief comment.
Very brief comment. Brenda, I just want to say thank you very much for hanging in there this year. I know it was extremely difficult to go through, but I know you are going to do an outstanding job, and those kids are going to be so fortunate, the ones that enroll in your program, so we really all appreciate your efforts.
Thank you.
And again, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Holly Yuhas, followed by Rudy Gonzalez, followed by Sorin Muntin.
Hello, my name is Holly Yuhas. I live in Newberry Park, California. I want to thank the council and the staff for considering the items that I proposed on my letter regarding film permits. I had just a few important, most important issues in my case, and I think that one of them, I wanted to ask for clarification at this point. One of the problems that we had is that our streets are private, and I don't think the city at the time was aware of that fact. And in our CCNRs, we are not allowed to park any vehicles on the street at all. So, under, I read the staff recommendations. I didn't read, you know, the revised standards and procedures with the strike ads, but it looks like we are covered there because we would be considered private owners if there's staging of five or more vehicles on those private streets. I don't know if you can reconsider because our streets are completely private, and we aren't, as residents, allowed to park on the street. But if this is, if I'm understanding this correctly, it looks like the homeowners association's approval would be required if staging of five or more vehicles or filming is to take place on the private streets. So, that was probably my most important issue. I wanted to say two more things. I think that all property owners, whether they are living in the homeowners association or living in those residences, should be notified. I know that when it comes to getting the permits, there's not a lot of lead time, but I think that at least some sort of notification should go out to property owners, whether or not they're individuals, corporate, in-state or out-of-state. I think that it would be probably the legal right of the property owner to note that some filming is going to take place. And then the last thing I wanted to recommend, that I think in here you have an insurance policy for a minimum of $1 million, and I would suggest increasing that. I don't think $1 million covers a lot of damage at this point, so you might want to consider increasing that to maybe a $10 million minimum policy for that insurance policy.
Thank you for your comments. I would like to say, for any public speaker that's following, that this is really the time to speak on items that are not on the agenda for discussion tonight, so this comment was probably more properly held for later. But thank you very much for being with us tonight.
I wasn't able to be here later, and I've not been to a meeting before, so.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you for listening.
Rudy Gonzalez, followed by Sorin Muntin, followed by Nick Kidway.
Good evening, Mayor Glancy, council members and staff. My name is Rudy Gonzalez. I'm Edison's Public Affairs Manager here in Thousand Oaks. I'm here this evening to provide an abbreviated version of a presentation that has been distributed to you. Southern California Edison is the largest electric utility in California, serving a population of more than 13 million people. As you know, the state has enacted legislation to help protect and preserve the environment and clean the air. Edison is working with state policymakers and other stakeholders to implement key elements of the law. Through its investments in operations, Edison is an industry leader in helping the state meet its environmental stewardship goals and reduce the country's dependency upon foreign oil. Edison has increased its infrastructure, its investment in infrastructure in recent years, and this year, the company will continue to invest at an even greater level. Among some of these investments will be investments in the local distribution and transmission systems, particularly to enable the development of new sources of renewable energy, the installation of advanced meters, the replacement of steam generators to extend the life of our San Onofre Nuclear Plant, and proposals to launch an innovative solar initiative using the rooftops of large commercial buildings. Over the next few years, Edison will be replacing existing meters with new advanced meters. Edison has the largest private electric vehicle fleet in the United States, and we have taken a leadership role in supporting the electric vehicle industry. Local investments in the community include new transmission lines that will increase capacity at existing substations, new distribution circuits that will alleviate loading issues on existing circuits, cable and switch additions and replacements throughout the city that will help minimize the duration of unplanned outages, and finally, a proposed substation to ease current and future electricity demands in both Thousand Oaks and Simi Valley. We appreciate the opportunities to meet with city staff, to share information, and listen to concerns that have been raised about this planned facility. As a member of a local business community, we realize the importance of supporting local nonprofit organizations, particularly those that focus on educational opportunities for the underserved. Going back to our commitment to the environment, I wanted to let you know that in 2008, Edison bought more than 80% of the solar energy produced in the United States for our customers. Edison leads the state investor-owned utilities by producing 16% of our electricity supply from renewable energy. My most important message this evening is to encourage businesses and residents to visit sce.com to learn about ways to reduce energy usage. My contact information is on the last page of the information provided to you. Please feel free to contact me should you have any questions about activity in New York City. Thanks so much.
Thanks, Mr. Gonzalez. Okay, Sorin Muntin, followed by Nick Kidway, followed by Jennifer Crandall.
Good evening. I'm Sorin Muntin, and I'm a resident of Thousand Oaks, and I'm here regarding the commercial revitalization grants that were recommended by the Business Roundtable, and I'd like to ask the City Council to approve the recommendation given by the Business Roundtable. Myself, I own a property on 10410 East Thousand Oaks Boulevard, which I would like to give them a better facelift, a better aesthetic look, and it would be very helpful for me to do this. And we already have the architectural plans done by Mr. Gonzalo Pedrosso, and the city already approved the plans, so we're ready to work if we can have a little help, and that's why I'm here, and I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you for being with us, Dr. Muntin. Appreciate it. Nick Kidway, followed by Jennifer Crandall.
Good evening. Good evening, Mayor Glancy. I begin in the name of God, who is most beneficial, most merciful. My name is Nick Egbal Kidway, and last time I checked, Director of Concerns in Thousand Oaks. First of all, I'd like to convey you the good news from last night where the Planning Commission on a 3-2 vote voted to deny the closure of the Mobile Home Park in Newberry Park. This issue will probably come before the council, and I hope that we will get the same vote over here. I basically am here to speak about my 19-year struggle about the unconstitutional and un-American Thousand Oaks non-resident library fee, which was passed at the last meeting, and I did not attend for a change, and glad that it was passed, but it's not completely passed in the sense that the battle continues with the county, which has threatened to take $190,000 away from the library. And that issue is still on the table, and because of work commitments, I could not go to the Board of Supervisors meeting, but I enjoyed watching it while I was working, which slowed me down, watched Dr. Glancy being recognized as a doctor, which not, I'm one of the few people that call him a doctor. I don't know if you noticed, Mayor, because I've been complaining because our card system of calling the speakers is so archaic, and I told you that OpsNOD has a better system, but I hope you noticed that the Board of Supervisors has gone into the electronic age, and if you haven't watched the replay on the internet, the city clerk enters the name rather than having to walk, and the chairman looks at the screen to see whose names are there, and then the votes also. They show a shot of the screen as to what the vote was, who voted yes and no. Simple system, but it works, and works a lot better. I was disappointed that the city manager tried to sneak in and speak a second time, and he was caught, and the chairman did not let him, and the library... time, and he was caught, and the chairman did not let him and the library persons get extra time. I mean, that's what is great about this nation, is that every citizen has an equal opportunity, unlike in this chamber, which for years, and that's why it is held in such low esteem, is that plays with the cards, plays with the citizens' times, and attacks citizens that come over here that would criticize. And that's the whole beauty of the American system, is that the people who disagree with you, and if they do it in a reasonable manner, you let them speak and have an intelligent debate. The city has lost the EIR for Lang Ranch. It shows that if things are done the wrong way, there is justice in this county. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kidway. Jennifer Crandall is our last speaker.
Hi, I'm Jennifer Crandall. I'm a resident of Thousand Oaks, and I'm with the stop team against the SCE. We're building these transmission towers down our road, and I came to thank you all for supporting us and making sure the proper steps are taken, that this is carefully done. And the judges from the CPUC is under their jurisdiction at this point, but I came to ask for continued support at the pre-hearing conference this Thursday. It's going to be at the Palm Garden Hotel, room, Palm 2, Room 495, Vantu Park Road in Thousand Oaks, and that's this Thursday. They're going to have a formal hearing for the formal protests at 1:30, and the public will be speaking at 3 o'clock. So, I encourage everyone, this is really important. I live on Reed Road. We, our road is a northern border of Thousand Oaks, and if we can show this on the screen, is the, oh, good. So, this is Reed Road, and we're trying to preserve this corridor. This is the corridor where they're trying to run the lines from Sunset Valley to through Reed Road and then over the freeway. Thousand Oaks is already polluted with these transmission lines. If you look down Thousand Oaks Boulevard and Moore Park Road, there's just so many of these lines, and I think we need to push to get things put underground. And I, since our meeting, I asked Mr. Gonzalez, who's presenting what I consider a lot of propaganda to you folks, to come out to my house to tell me how this is going to affect our neighborhood, our road, and Thousand Oaks. And I can't get a straight answer. I was told today in email I had an answer about what the size of these poles are, but from everything I can gather, that is on Highway 101 on Calabasas, and that is going to be what's going in front of our front yard, 100 feet from our front door. So, this affects me on a very personal level, because we've been trying to sell our home now, and it's important to us, but this is definitely something, this pole is going to be 100 feet from our front yard, and that pole does not belong where that wooden distribution pole is. I was told that we could put it within five feet of the trees, and I've since learned that we need 20-foot of clearance. The horizontal members are going to encroach upon our front yard. They're going to go over our front yard, and my neighbor's bedroom window is 25 feet from the power lines right now where their daughter lives. So, there's some big concerns, and I think all of this is very misleading, what Southern California is saying. So, I really want the city to continue supporting this for us.
Thank you, Ms. Crandall. Appreciate you being down here.
Thank you.
Item 7, redevelopment agency consent calendar comments. Ms. Bill Delapena.
Thank you. I would like to move the consent calendar minus item Q.
Any additional removals? Okay. Would you like to address Q?
Yes. Q deals with the salary increases, and I have made it clear in the past that I don't think that 12% pay raises are appropriate right now. And although I think that some of the raises are warranted, those making $100,000 and more, I was hoping we could revisit that issue. So, as a result of that, we, I will vote against item Q.
Okay, thank you. Are there any council comments to this? None. Mr. Mitnick, you have a comment?
Okay, item Q, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, is part of the annual process we go through, and it's in full compliance with the existing labor MOUs. We take a look at all the city classifications. There are over 400 of them, and those that have fallen out of sync with the market are adjusted accordingly. And there are seven classifications that are recommended to be adjusted to comply with the labor market, but of those seven, only five actually have positions. The ranges move, whether or not the individuals, and I think there's a total of nine bodies in those five positions, whether or not they, just because the ranges move doesn't necessarily mean that the salaries are adjusted. That's subject to the annual performance evaluation for that employee. So, these are not pay raises. They're salary adjustments for less than 1% of the total workforce.
Thank you very much, Ms. Bill. You have a motion on the floor. Any comments to the motion? None, please vote.
Mayor, we have two-speaker cards.
Oh, hang on. My apologies. Jill Lederer, followed by Nick Kidway.
Good evening, Mayor Glancy, city council members, city staff. My name is Jill Lederer. My residence is Moore Park, California, and I'm the President and CEO of the Thousand Oaks Westlake Village Regional Chamber of Commerce. I'm pleased to be joined here tonight by the chamber's current Chairman of the Board, Madeline Hess, who is the owner of Sarah Lynn's Culinary Classics, our Chair-elect, Pete Trappell, owner of Phone on Hold Marketing, board member, Phil Koontz, owner of PAK Financial Group, who else? Susan Marata of Silver Star Automotive, John LaRoca of Sage Bank Card, and Jan Smith, the Chamber's Director of Governmental and Economic Affairs. We are all honored to be here tonight to represent the business community in expressing our gratitude to the City of Thousand Oaks for the outstanding job you do for all of us. We look forward to renewing our contract with you tonight and exceeding your expectations for many productive years to come. If I may take a moment to share with your audience some facts about your chamber that they may not know. We are one of the three largest chambers of commerce in the tri-county area and are one of fewer than 5% of chambers of commerce nationally that are accredited. We hold a four-star accreditation rating from the United States Chamber of Commerce, one of only nine chambers in the state of California to be awarded this rating, and we're celebrating our 70th anniversary, serving the businesses of the Greater Canejo Valley this year. But we are all about looking forward, and this year holds many exciting goals for us. We're hosting a fabulous nine-day trip to China in October that both members and non-members are welcome to participate in. We're working to bring an impactful bi-local campaign to TV and other media, and we're offering our members a package of affordable advertising that include utilizing our website, which receives over 25,000 hits a month, email blasts to our membership, and print ads in the Canejo Business Times, which has a monthly distribution of 5,000 issues. All of this information can be checked out on our website, along with our online directory of all our members, and our website address is www.towlvchamber.org. In closing, on behalf of the Board of Directors, staff, and 1,300 members of the Thousand Oaks Westlake Village Regional Chamber of Commerce, we thank you so much for your partnership, and I'm available to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Ms. Leder. Any questions? None? Thank you very much for being with us tonight. Mr. Kidway?
Nick Egbal Kidway, President of Newberry Park. I want to read from page 2 of your directions, consent calendar. Matters listed on consent calendar are considered to be routine, emphasis on routine, and will be approved in one motion. That's why I unfortunately come and speak over here, because your consent calendar is anything but routine, and just like the item G on which the chair lady spoke, it really should be a report. It should not be a routine item, especially when you're dealing with taxpayer dollars, and I approve of giving the money to the chamber, but there should be a discussion and a vote on it separately. In fact, it's going between numbers. I mean, from what I remember, the chamber used to get 29,000 last time I checked, but there's two figures here, 43,000 for 2010, '11, and 53,000 for 2009 and '10. That's quite a $10,000 difference, a $20,000 difference. I mean, that's a lot of money, and when you're talking about taxpayer dollars, you should have a discussion, and it would be great to have the chamber people come and show their support for the city. I again would like to draw your attention to the minutes, number A. You are still doing the agendas together instead of breaking apart the redevelopment agency agenda, which was promised to me, which was promised by a council member would be coming. It doesn't cost any money, but it's, I mean, the president talks about transparency in government, but it ain't here. And I don't know when it's going to happen, and the minutes I spoke about yesterday also, it was great to see all these men in uniform over here. I mean, that's a fundamental thing, that the minutes should have a synopsis as to what happened, and when citizens speak, like the President of the chamber just spoke, there should be one or two or three lines to say what she spoke and what I said, rather than just saying spoke pro or against. It is just disgraceful to do those kind of things. While I approve of the Newberry Road and Botched Road sewer things that you have on I, that again should be a report so the people know. I mean, Vantu Park and Newberry Road has a project going for two months, and it creates a problem because of the traffic jam and the stop sign. So, these are the kind of, that's one of the reasons, these things do not belong in the consent calendar. Number Q, the amendment on the Thousand Oaks Management Association and the salary increase, of course, that's just completely ridiculous that only one council member spoke against the raises. I mean, in this economy, the leadership should really take the step and come forward like other people have done, and take a 10 or 15 or 20% reduction in the salary. And it's interesting, I printed the salary schedules. They are much lower than what our top people are giving. I don't know where you come up with giving so much money to these top brass. I'm done. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kidway. At this time, we're going to go to 12A, because it's a very fast hearing. Oh, I haven't taken the vote yet. Pardon me. Why don't you guys switch seats while we're doing this? There's a motion on the floor to accept the consent calendar. Q has been dealt with, so please vote on the motion.
Mr. Mayor, if I may clarify, we will vote on Q separately, since I made the motion to approve the calendar minus item Q.
Okay, that's fine. Vote on the motion minus Q. All, please vote.
That motion carries 4-0, and I would just like to read the ordinance title for item U, an ordinance amending Article 10, Chapter 3, Title IX of the municipal code relating to standard specifications for water design and construction standards.
Thank you. Now, item Q, in favor, the motion to approve Q. Yeah, moved. Please vote.
Motion carries 3-1.
Thank you. Okay, now, 12A. Mr. Wartick.
Good evening, Mayor and council. Up here with me is my colleague from Community Development Department, Caroline Milton. This is a pleasure on a semi, a biannual basis to share with you and with the community, one of the outreach programs in which the city engages. The commercial revitalization grant program is something that we take very, very seriously. On a biannual basis, an allocation of up to $240,000 is made available through the council, through the city budget, for use in revitalization of properties along the Thousand Oaks Boulevard corridor. The Business Round Table, appointed by council, elected a, selected a ad hoc committee to review all of the applications this year, and we have from the Business Round Table this evening, the four members of the ad hoc committee, Phil Koontz, who is the immediate past Chair now of the Business Round Table, Susan Marata, who chaired the ad hoc committee, and committee members Joel Volk and John LaRoca. I'm going to ask Ms. Marata, as Chair of the ad hoc committee, to come on down and make brief comments.
Good evening, Susan Marata. I really don't have much to say, other than we did look at all 15 applications. We tried to spread the money out as fairly and trying to get the most bang, I guess, for our buck, if you will, and we looked at visible blight. And we also took into consideration which applicants would really be able to complete their projects if they got the money. So, and I'm here to answer any questions, but that's pretty much it.
Thank you. Any questions, Ms. Marata? Thanks, Susan. You're the speaker? Mr. Wartick?
I'm sorry. I think that Ms. Marata summarized it. We are available for questions if you have any.
Pardon me. Any questions, staff? Yes, Ms. Bill Delapena.
Just a quick question for the largest allocation of $100,000. Is, that is going to be a medical clinic serving the lower-income households? Is that going to be in addition to the Canejo Free Clinic? Is it in concert with the Canejo Free Clinic, or is it replacing it? I would imagine it's not. If you could elaborate, please.
Mayor and council, the property owner is present. His name is Keith Sinclair. Perhaps you would like to hear from him directly to have this question answered.
Right there.
Why not? If he's here, why not?
Mr. Sinclair, please give us your name and city of residence.
My name is Keith Sinclair.
Why don't you wait until you get in front of the mic?
My name is Keith Sinclair, and I live in Pacific Palisades, California. I'd like to thank Caroline Milton of the Community Development Department, and also the members of the Business Round Table for recommending my project, located at 322 East Thousand Oaks Boulevard. And I'm asking the members of the council to please support this grant. As far as the new tenant that will be going in will be Ventura County Medical Center, the Canejo Valley Family Medical Group, the WIC program, and an urgent care facility. They are presently located in my building across the street at 223 East Thousand Oaks Boulevard, but this, they're expanding by 300% in square footage, and they're reaching out to the underserved community in this area. The building, we're going to be doing some major renovations, removal of overgrown and outdated and poorly-made landscaping, the creation of two prominent covered building entrances, creating physically accessibility for the disabled. As part of the site renovation, we'll be installing adequate lighting for the project, improving the site circulation on the project so it's easier for people to come and go. We're also adding exterior windows, and with those windows, we'll be adding structural steel frames to seismically strengthen the building. Also, my landscape architect, Jim Dean, is here, and we're adding some water features and seating areas on the exterior of the building, and he can certainly show you what he's designed and what we'll be implementing there.
Any questions? Ms. Bill.
Yes, I do have a question. The, it's okay. You don't have to show me the landscape unless my colleagues are interested, but.
There's a rendering of the building in front, what it will be looking like.
Has this already been approved by the city?
We're in plan check right now.
All right. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Bring it down. Appreciate it. Motion, Mr. Fox.
Thank you. First, I want to thank the committee for doing the difficult work of allocating public funds. It's always difficult to do that, and it's nice to see the citizens step up and do that. So, we thank Ms. Marata and the whole committee. So we thank Ms. Marata and the whole committee. And with that, I'll move recommendations one and two.
With cards.
Okay.
There are. I just see them.
Okay. Then I'll probably hold my motion until we have the cards.
That'd be fine. Thank you.
Good.
We've heard from Susan Marata and Mr. Sinclair. We have now Linda Lucera and Nick Kidway.
Good evening. I represent Najan Kohan, who is the property owner of twenty-six-fifty-five Thousand Oaks Boulevard, is a shopping center named Palm Plaza, Building B. Mr. Kohan has applied for the grant to make needed urgent repairs. The building is older, I think it was built in the mid or early seventies, and it has its original air conditioning. We have four spaces for tenants. We have two tenants that are occupying the first and the fourth space, who require a large amount or a greater amount of electricity to run their air conditioning. The first tenant has a tropical fish store, and the third...the fourth one is an international market. The market has now purchased a meat case, the cold case, that takes a lot of electricity, and another case for milk and juice and whatnot. The tropical fish store must have the air conditioning for the fish, and one occasion, the air conditioning went out, the fish died, and the market lost all their product. We need to replace the air conditioning, but in order to replace the air conditioning, we have to rewire and improve on the electrical system to hold the new surge of electricity that's required for the air conditioning. In addition to that, we need to repair the roof. When it rains, the roof leaks over the exterior lighting, which creates a hazard. We have one unit that is not rentable, and has been vacant for over a year, because it doesn't have any air conditioning in it. The other units draw the air conditioning away from that particular unit. We feel that the electrical problem is causing a hazard, and we would please ask that you approve the grant. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor Glancy, City Council, Nick Kidway. I don't know why it is so difficult to have a speaker card called out, especially on such issues where so much money from the taxpayers is being involved. I guess there is an improvement, in that about a dozen years ago, this mayor laughed at me and other people, saying that we really did not have a say in this issue, because we did not own property on the Boulevard, et cetera. It was interesting that the B word was used, which is blight, that there is visible blight. I would like the staff, since this is almost a quasi-judicial hearing, it should be, spending two-hundred-and-forty-thousand dollars as to describe to us what the blight is, and I would like to remind the council that in order to have findings of blight, you need two issues, two findings. The first finding is that the businesses acting on their own, without the help of the government, are not able to emulate these conditions. That means these business people that own these properties that are in the millions of dollars, they cannot spend twenty or forty thousand dollars of their own pocket money. And the second is that there is so much rampant crime in the area, that the government has to spend their money to remove this blight. And so, Thousand Oaks Boulevard, since nineteen-seventy-nine, has so much, so much crime, that we have to keep this endless pool, that the money has to be spent. And then, this money is given, but then it's...there's no follow-up. I mean, in the consent calendar, three months ago, Phantom Electronics was brought in, that they were given the money eight years ago, and they had still not done the project. Maybe now, I think they may have done the project. I agree with the hundred thousand dollars for a good cause, for this clinic, which is remodeling of a new business, but it should really...there are other pockets available, i.e. the CDBG block grant money, et cetera, to help it, rather than redevelopment money. And where is this redevelopment money coming? And it's so important, that's why I feel so upset that you do not allow citizens to speak on an issue like this. This money is coming from our general fund for the state. And Lord knows, if anybody thinks that the state of California is in such wonderful shape, that money can be given to multimillionaire businessmen, then you can slap me and say, "Nick, you should go home, you don't know what you're talking about." But it's a disgrace that a farce of a lie that a blight exists continues, and money is given, which makes people happy, but it's wrong.
Thank you, Mr. Kidway. Ms. Albano, you have a comment?
I just wanted to clarify that this area, it's...this type of area and what we're using the money for, just so that the members, Mr. Mayor and members of the council, but really for members of the audience that...and public, that this is redevelopment at its best. It's what we're...redevelopment is used to help rehabilitate, redevelop properties, and the money does not come from the state general fund. It has to do with property taxes, and because we have a redevelopment area, money comes into us, and we...it's just a little bit different than what was said, and I wanted to have the benefit of the public to understand that this really is sort of in-the-ground redevelopment, and very basic to why you use redevelopment money for. It's not our housing trust fund, it has to do with our general redevelopment money that is exactly used for these kind of purposes, and that's why the council has decided to use the money in this way. In the past, we had used another pool of money that wasn't quite as appropriate as this is. So thank you for indulging me with that.
Thank you, Ms. Albano. We have one statement card with no opinion. Mr. Fox, you have a motion that is in the works.
Right. So I'm going to go ahead and move recommendations one, two, and three.
Comments to the motion? None, please vote.
Motion carries four zero.
Thank you. We will now transition to eight A, and give staff a chance to switch chairs.
So, City Council Redevelopment Agency hearing advertised as required by law, open to consider Agenda Item Eight A regarding an amendment to the land use element of general plan, LU two thousand eight dash seven oh five five nine, zone change two thousand eight dash seven oh six nine oh, residential plan development, RPD two thousand eight dash seven oh six eight eight, parcel map waiver, PMW two thousand eight seven oh six nine one, lot line adjustment, two thousand eight dash seven oh six nine two, underground utility waiver, two thousand eight dash seven oh six eight nine, oak tree permit, two thousand nine dash seven zero zero six one, allowing construction of a sixty-unit multifamily affordable housing project, located twenty-six seventy-two, twenty-six seventy-six, twenty-six eighty-six, and twenty-seven thirty-six Hillcrest Drive, and twenty-six forty-five Los Feliz Drive. The applicant is Mini Mansions. We're also opening the Agenda Item Eight A regarding...A two regarding the approval of the owner participation agreement with Mini Mansions for development of affordable rental housing on Hillcrest, Los Feliz properties, twenty-six seventy-two to twenty-seven thirty-six Hillcrest Drive, and twenty-six forty-five Los Feliz Drive. Speaker card is available for those wishing to address the City Council regarding this public hearing and the redevelopment agency. All documents for City Council and the redevelopment agency should be presented to the city clerk prior to speaking. Speakers are requested to state their name and city of residence for the record. We have nineteen people have presented cards and pursuant to council standards. The applicant is allowed fifteen minutes with a five-minute rebuttal, and the remaining speakers are allowed two minutes each. The yellow light displays when you have one minute remaining.
Thank you very much. The applicant, Rick Schrader, is first, and is followed by Forrest Freels and Stephen Low. Pardon me.
You'll go to the staff.
Yeah, we'll go to staff first.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. I'd like to make a brief presentation, so you can go to the applicant. As mentioned, there are...as mentioned, there are seven applications filed by Mini Mansions to accommodate the construction of sixteen affordable housing. If you can, please look at the screen for PowerPoint presentation. Seven applications submitted by Mini Mansions to construct the proposed project include general plan amendment, zone change application, residential plan development, parcel map waiver, lot line adjustment, underground utility waiver, and oak tree permit applications. And the applicant also requested to defer the development impact fees onto the occupancy of the project. The location of the project is on Hillcrest Drive, south of Hillcrest Drive, and there's another second frontage on Los Feliz Drive. Background regarding the project, the site contains almost three acres in size, and it was with our...the system was purchased in two thousand and seven. The City Council authorized concurrent processing of the other entitlement application with the zone change and the general plan amendment. Last year, Mini Mansions conducted two outreach meeting and a third meeting in two thousand and nine. They met with the homeowners in the area, and based on the meetings they conducted, they revised the design of the project with the following. They eliminated three-story element of Building Two, which is parallel to Hillcrest Drive. They lowered the height of two buildings in the back facing Los Feliz Drive, and no vehicle access from Los Feliz Drive. They lined the driveway, the project driveway with the project across the street and Hillcrest Drive. And then, they filed a lot line adjustment to adjust the property line between their property and adjacent property, and they agreed to construct off-site sidewalk, to connect their sidewalk to the existing sidewalk in Los Feliz Drive. There is a picture, a view from the project from Hillcrest Drive, and a second one from Los Feliz Drive. The general plan amendment request is to change the general plan designation from low-density residential to medium-density residential on three parcels totaling one-point-two acres. The other two parcels already has a designation of medium-density. The site is identified or included in the city's housing element to accommodate affordable housing in the city. The proposed general plan amendment will increase the general capacity...the general plan capacity by thirteen residential units, however...excuse me. The previous general plan amendments that took place since Major E was adopted in nineteen ninety-six created a credit of four-hundred-and-four units. So this project, the thirteen units will be taken out from the credit, and the proposed amendment will not require a vote of the public under Major E. The current zoning on the site has two zoning designation. One is RPD, seven units, single-family detached on one parcel, and the remaining four parcels has designation of RA, residential exclusive. The requested zoning on the five parcels is residential plan development, fifteen units per acre. The project design contains five residential buildings, one community building, it has a subterranean parking structure for the tenants, it has carports for the tenants again, and guest parking. There's two playgrounds, one of them, the largest playground, is on top of the parking structure. Both playgrounds contain tight lots, and the larger area contains a barbecue area and seating area. There's only access to the project from Hillcrest Drive, vehicle access from Hillcrest Drive, and pedestrian access from Los Feliz Drive. Here's a site plan showing the layout of the buildings and circulation. The building design, the architecture of the project is Mediterranean, with stucco and stone veneer. Three buildings have two-story element to them, and two buildings have three-story element. The design includes multi-pane windows, shutters, wood lattice, and decorative iron railings, and all the units have a private patio areas. Here's a rendering of the project from...looking at the west side from Hillcrest Drive, and that's the building parallel to Hillcrest Drive, and another picture looking east on the project, another rendering. The project complies with the residential plan development standards in the municipal code, with regard to design, parking, building height, and setbacks. However, the applicants are requesting three waivers from the code, and they are reducing the width of the driveway from thirty feet to twenty-five feet, increase the driveway grade from seven percent to fourteen percent, and increase the paved area from twenty percent to twenty-four and a half percent. These waivers, staff support these waivers, and the planning commission recommend approval, because reducing the width of the driveway from thirty feet to twenty-five feet is acceptable to fire department with regard to access to the site, and has been granted in the past for Oak Creek Senior Housing Project and Los Feliz Mini Mansion Project. Increasing the driveway width grade from seven percent to fourteen percent will affect only thirty-five feet of the driveway, and it is a transition between the two sections of the parking lot, and parking spaces will not be impacted. With regard to the paved area increase, it's a small percentage increase in relationship to landscape percentage they provided on site. All these waivers are not feasible to the public, they're inward, and they're not affecting the public safety with regard to the project, and they are not precedent-setting. The density bonus, the general plan, the proposed general plan and zoning designation allows up to forty-five units on the site. However, state law and the city's municipal code allow density bonus of up to thirty-five percent or fifteen additional units, if the project will provide up to eleven percent of the units for low, very low-income households. The project provides fifty percent of the units for that income category, and therefore the project qualifies for density bonus under the city and state law. During the meetings, the community outreach meeting, Mini Mansions heard traffic concern from the owners of that traffic and safety along Hillcrest Drive, and there's two main issues there, is there's no traffic signal at the intersection of Skyline and Hillcrest, which will be addressed in the owner participation agreement, which will...and will be installed prior to occupancy of the project, and the lack of bike lanes along Hillcrest Drive, and also the two-way left turn and median on Hillcrest Drive. The City Council a couple months ago approved a study to look at the feasibility of providing...of looking at the Hillcrest Drive from Arabs and Dozerberg, and come up with design options for these two items. The other entitlements for the project is the five parcels need to be merged in order for the project to be constructed, a lot line adjustment between Mini Mansions property and next-door adjacent property on Los Feliz Drive, for existing improvements to remain. There are eight poles on the site, and the applicant filed a underground utility waiver to waive the requirement, underground six of them. Four of them are off-site and serve in existing residents, and two of them on-site, and they are also serving existing residents, and two will be removed. The oak tree permit is for the encroachment within the protected zone of an off-site oak tree in the back of a single-family residence west of the site. Staff prepared a mitigated negative declaration. There are some potentially significant effects which could be mitigated through the conditions of the project to less... of the project to less than significant. The applicant has agreed to the mitigation measures in MND. Plan Commission staff recommends that the City Council approve mitigated negative declaration number two seventy and mitigation monitoring plan, introduce the zone change ordinance, adopt a resolution to approve the general plan amendment and other entitlements, and staff recommends granting the request to defer certain development impact fees until the occupancy of the project. Thank you. With that, I'll turn it to Bill Hatchell for his presentation.
Give me a moment to call this up. I'll be addressing you primarily as the Redevelopment Agency, so I'll say, good evening, Mr. Chair and Board Members. This is a companion case to the legislative acts and entitlements that you're considering for the project, and it relates to the Redevelopment Agency's financial stake in the project. And I just want to give you a little bit of background about that. We assisted in the acquisition of the five parcels in two separate actions. In April of two thousand and seven, we acquired the, or we funded the purchase of the first two parcels, and then in November of two thousand and seven, the agency provided funding for the additional three parcels with a total size of two point nine eight acres. The total agency contribution is five point five six million dollars approximately, and that equates to about an average unit cost of ninety-two thousand six hundred dollars. We're not asking for any additional funding as part of this action. The OPA will merely memorialize our agreement, with the exception of an additional contribution for a traffic signal that I'll discuss later. The loan agreements that were executed require that we enter into an OPA by June thirtieth, so here we are on June twenty-third, and that has implications with regard to the long-term funding commitments related to the project that I'll talk about in a little bit. The proposal from the Redevelopment Agency perspective, it's sixty units, it consists of fifty-nine restricted units and one manager's unit, which would be considered market rate. The total estimated cost is approximately twenty-six point five million dollars, and it targets income levels of thirty, extremely low, which is thirty percent of area median income, twenty-one very low, which is fifty percent of area median income, and eight low, which is, in this case, sixty percent of area median income. As I indicated previously, our commitment to the project is five point five six million dollars, and that was previously committed, so when we talk about the agency contribution, that's funding that's already occurred. And then we're asking for an additional funding request of two hundred and twenty thousand dollars for traffic signal installation. I just wanted to touch briefly on the purpose of the Owner Participation Agreement. It basically memorializes our concurrence with the project, and that's set forth in a project description that's Attachment Four to the OPA. It also sets forth terms, conditions of use and ongoing operation and maintenance of the project. It sets forth any special conditions or requirements of the project, and then the terms and conditions of repayment of the agency loan. With regard to ownership, obviously, Mini Mansions is currently the owner. However, one of the significant funding sources for the project is anticipated to be tax credit financing, and as such, that will require creation of partnership with an investor. And so the Owner Participation Agreement makes allowance for that type of transfer of interest, but that's the only type of ownership transfer or assignment of this agreement that's contemplated. As I indicated, the approximate project cost is twenty-six point five million dollars. The bulk of that, as you can see, comes from tax credit financing, which is about sixteen point seven million dollars. It'll also be comprised of conventional financing, some home funds, and a couple of other smaller grants, as well as our previously committed loan. I want to talk a bit about the structure of the loan, and this kind of has implications with regard to the timing of bringing the OPA before you now, and that is that the financing for the project has not been finalized, so it makes it difficult for us to establish terms and conditions for the repayment of the agency loan. And so we're going to structure, or we're proposing to structure the loan in a two-step process. And the first step is that we would consolidate the prior agency loans into a single loan and basically roll forward the terms, and that is a deferred loan with no interest accruing, with the exception of if a default were to occur. And in that case, then the loan would be callable, and the default interest rate is ten percent. The agreement says basically highest allowed by law or ten percent, whichever is less, so in effect, it's ten percent. The most likely cause of default in this instance with relate to financing is with relationship to two performance dates. And the first is the Mini Mansions requirement to provide evidence of permanent financing by April first of two thousand and eleven, and then the second is the commencement of construction date, which is June thirtieth, two thousand and eleven. So assuming that they go forward and are able to obtain their permanent financing sources, what we would then propose is that we convert that loan into a more conventional-style loan with modified loan terms that are kind of based on our historic precedent, which is payments based on residual receipts from the project, which is cash flow after payments. And the interest rate has generally been around three percent, which is consistent with the city's investment portfolio. And one note with regard to that is that the Owner Participation Agreement authorizes the Executive Director to approve those and execute those modified loans, and the reason for that is that the terms would be consistent with historical norm, and it would obviate the need to come back to the agency for that. I want to touch on traffic signal installation, which Hader addressed in his presentation briefly. Part of the OPA requires that Mini Mansions install this signal at, will basically design and install this signal at Hillcrest and Skyline, and it also stipulates in the schedule of performance that this occur prior to occupancy of the project. And the way that that's envisioned being structured is that the agency will reimburse Mini Mansions for the cost of the signal up to two hundred and twenty thousand dollars that sum is arrived at by taking the CIP cost for traffic signal of two hundred thousand dollars and adding a ten percent contingency to that fee. And then the city would reimburse the agency at the time. The signal would normally come up for installation on the priority list, and the council would be considering that list at their July fourteenth meeting. And right now, that's envisioned that that priority would place it within fiscal year two thousand and eleven, two thousand and twelve. So it's kind of a circular arrangement. Mini Mansions installs the signal, the agency refunds Mini Mansions for that cost, and then the city ultimately reimburses the agency at the time the signal would have normally been installed. Just some key deadlines with regard to project timing. By the end of two thousand and ten, the applicant's required to submit project plans to the agency and the city for permit and approval. Again, by April first, they're required to submit evidence of tax credit and other sources of financing. By June thirtieth, two thousand and eleven, they're to begin construction, and then by June thirtieth, two thousand and twelve, they're to complete construction. And the reason that those dates are a little further out is we gave them the opportunity to apply for two funding rounds because in the current economic state, funding is somewhat constrained, and competition is pretty strict for those sources of fundings. Very briefly, the elements of default, what would constitute a fault for the OPA is assignment or transfer of agreement not contemplated, which would be a tax credit investor type of arrangement, assignment or transfer of ownership of the land, failure to execute, execute and deliver loan documents prior to June thirtieth, failure to submit project plans and obtain approval and permits, and failure to obtain adequate project financing. So in short, the benefits of the project to the Redevelopment Agency are that it provides fifty, fifty-nine new units at a fifty-five-year term, and it helps to achieve housing element goals and the agency implementation plan goals. And lastly, our recommendation is a twofold one. As the agency, we're requesting that you adopt the Owner Participation Agreement as presented, and that you approve the appropriation of the two hundred and twenty thousand dollars for signal installation. And then as the city, we're asking that you adopt a resolution concurring with approval of the Owner Participation Agreement and authorizing reimbursement of the agency for the signal expense. And that concludes our presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Hatchell, Mr. Alawami. Nice presentation. Questions of staff? Ms. Bill?
Thank you. Good evening, staff. Thank you very much for a very detailed presentation, a very complicated sort of transactions we're, transaction we're dealing here with tonight. I would like to know why this particular application, which is requesting a general plan change or amendment, did not require an EIR, rather a mitigated negative declaration?
This issue came up before the Plan and Commission. We responded that whenever an EIR is required, we essentially have an environmental effect that is considered to be significant and cannot be avoided. There's no means to mitigate that effect, and we would go through a, an alternative analysis that would look at ways to either avoid or reduce those effects. In this particular case, this project does not have a significant environmental effect that cannot be mitigated or avoided in some other way, so the appropriate document was a mitigated negative declaration. It has very limited impacts, this project does.
In reading some of the letters, I am receiving conflicting information. There are HOAs in the area that say that all of their needs have been met, and then there are other homeowners who say that this is completely out of the question. Then there's another homeowner that is disputing the lot line adjustment. Could you please elaborate on all three elements of my question?
Well, I need to know specifically what environmental issues are raised by the HOAs so that I can address them. I don't have those documents in front of me. With regard to the lot line adjustments and other issues pertaining to the development planning aspects, Mr. Alawami is probably more appropriate to address those issues. Do you know of any specifics?
Well, it is in our green packet tonight. There are homeowners who are extremely concerned about the traffic, and I'm wondering why no real traffic study was done.
Well, actually, there were a number of different traffic studies that were done, both internally and paid for by the, by the developer in this particular case, and supervised and reviewed by the Traffic Division, City's Traffic Division. Both the internal report that was prepared by the Traffic Division and the independent study corroborated the fact that there were no significant traffic impacts associated with this particular project. It looked in very great detail at the public safety issues, the accident histories along this portion of Hillcrest Drive. There was considerable testimony provided by the Traffic Division, and there may be someone here in the audience this evening that can respond more directly, but there simply were no significant unavoidable impacts that were identified. The traffic signal, as you've been told about this evening, is something that was requested by a number of different residents. They were concerned about traffic safety issues. That is being proposed as a, an aspect of the project. It was also indicated, too, that the City's Traffic Division is actually involved in a more detailed analysis of other improvements to the roadway system that are not related to this particular development permit application. They have to do with the operational aspects of the design of the road, and this particular project does not create an impact in and of itself, so I would offer that as an explanation.
If I could just follow up on that before Mr. Alawami answers the question, some of the allegations made included fatal accidents, other accidents, and the fact that Conejo Road is not, is not really, is deemed by the residents there dangerous because it doesn't have a sidewalk. If you could please elaborate on that.
We have Mr. Larry Tay with the Transportation Division, or Transportation, or the Traffic Division, who's actually here, and he can provide a more detailed response than I can.
Members of the council, good evening. My name is Larry Tay. I'm with the Traffic Engineering Division. I was a member of staff who prepared the traffic impact report for this particular project. We did review the accident history on Hillcrest Drive between Erbs Road and Duesenberg Drive, and what we determined was that the accident rate on this particular roadway segment was very similar to those of comparable roadway facilities throughout the city and across the state of California.
And what is comparable, if you could go into detail?
I believe the accident rates were about slightly less than three accidents per million vehicle miles traveled. The statewide average, I believe, was about two point nine, two point nine one or two point nine two accidents per million vehicles mile traveled, and the actual accident rate on Hillcrest is about two point nine six accidents per million vehicle miles traveled. So it's slightly higher, it's about point, point oh five accidents per million vehicle miles traveled, which really translates to one additional accident every three or four years based on the traffic volumes and the length of the roadway segment in question. And I'm talking about Hillcrest Drive between Erbs Road and Duesenberg Drive.
And how many accidents, how many fatal accidents have there been on Hillcrest?
Over the, over the course of how, how long a period of time?
Well, I would imagine over the last at least five years.
There was one very recent fatal accident involving a cyclist, and there's a, there was one fatal, I believe, at the intersection of Hillcrest and Skyline, maybe that dates back four or five years. I'm not aware of any, any others within that particular timeframe. There may have been some, you know, prior to that.
Was the cumulative effect or impact of any additional developments that might go in also taken into consideration?
Yes, the results of the study indicate that there are no project impacts, no significant project impacts to any of the city's intersections or roadway segments, and that's based on the existing, relative to the existing condition. And I guess in response to the MND, there was a public comment that was inquiring about whether or not the roadway system had the capacity to accommodate not only the Mini Mansions project, but a few other proposed or approved projects in that general vicinity. And in response to those public comments, we did do or perform a cumulative scenario, which took into account not only Mini Mansions, but fifteen other projects, either approved, proposed, or highly likely in the, in the project vicinity. And what we found was that the levels of service at any of the city's intersections will not change, even with all of those projects on the ground.
And what is the level of service currently? A, B, C?
Well, the level of service on, on this roadway segment of Hillcrest between Erbs and Duesenberg is at a level of service A currently. As far as individual intersections in the study area along the Boulevard, Conejo School Road, Hillcrest Drive, and Erbs, they're all operating at either a level of service A or B in both the morning and evening peak hours respectively. And generally, we're seeing very solid As, you know, thirty percent of capacity, forty percent of capacity, rather than the marginal Bs, or, you know, that are at sixty-five, seventy percent of capacity. So there's a lot of additional capacity available on, on all of these surrounding streets to accommodate moderate traffic volumes, which, which will be produced by a project of this size.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Tay. I'd like to go to Mr. Hader Alawami.
Yeah, regarding the lot line adjustment, there was a dispute, and with Mini Mansion staff discussed that with the property owner. A civil engineer will be hired to survey the land and determine exactly what the property line is. If there is no need for a lot line adjustment, then there's no need for it. However, initial study shows that the retaining wall and some of the structure is built on Mini Mansions property. So Mini Mansion will be required to do a detailed survey to determine what the property lines, and if there is encroaching within the property, the lot line adjustment will be needed. Otherwise, it would not be needed at this time.
And why was that particular issue not taken care of before tonight's hearing?
That requires more detailed study of, of the property lines, and that will come after the project is approved, because that requires more cost to hire a civil engineer to do the actual survey of the property lines, not just in that location, but the entire property, survey the land and stake the property lines for, to determine exactly what, I mean, there is an initial survey done, but that's just for the, for the proposed project conceptual plan.
Okay. And do you know if we have any representatives here tonight from the HOA, at least one HOA that says that everything was okay with this proposal?
Yes, they are presented here tonight.
Okay, then I'll ask them questions later on. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Certainly. Additional questions to staff? Ms. Irwin?
Thank you, Dr. Glancy. My first question is with the bike lanes and median. We've been talking about this on Hillcrest for ages, looking at putting bike lanes in and putting a center median. Is that talking about one lane in each direction, and does... And does, to me, it seems much safer, but does Hillcrest have the capacity to go down to one lane in each direction?
Right. And as Hader mentioned, as part of capital improvement program, there's MI 2039, which is currently looking at, I guess the purpose of the MI is to achieve Class II bike lanes on Hillcrest Drive from terminus to terminus. But one specific component of the project looks at the segment of Hillcrest between Erbs and Duesenberg, and we've instructed the consultant in preparing their conceptual alternatives for different striping in the area to look at bike lanes, two-way left turn lanes, parking, and retention of capacity. And they've, they've been able to generate three alternatives so far. All of them have bike lanes. Two of the alternatives have two lanes in each direction. One of the alternatives has a road diet, which includes one two-way left turn lane and I guess one lane in each direction with bike lanes and parkings on either side. But we have not selected an alternative. The consultant is not done with their, or not finished with their final product. All they've handed over to us right now are the three conceptual alternatives. And, you know, as I said, one includes a road diet. The other has two lanes in each direction with a double yellow center line with parking and bike lanes on both sides. And a third alternative includes two lanes in each direction, a two-way left turn lane down the middle, and bike lanes on both sides, but parking unfortunately could not fit in the 64 feet, you know, curb-to-curb width. So there are three alternatives right now, and we have not selected one of them.
What would be the timing for implementing that?
The MI 2039, the final deliverable from the consultant is anticipated for summer of 2009, which is sometime at the end of this August. They would provide us with some conceptual layouts, and at that point, it would be up to staff, and I'd assume the council, to determine which of the alternatives is the most appropriate. And some of these alternatives, depending which one you would select, would presumably affect a lot of residents. You know, there are a lot of competing interests out there, parking, access, two-way left turn lane, capacity, bike lanes. And unfortunately, there probably will not be an alternative that accommodates all four of those interests. So it would be up to the council to identify which one should take priority. And we would imagine, we envision a series of public hearings dedicated to this endeavor sometime later this fall.
And I can't quite picture, where is the stoplight? Well, I mean, I have the map, but I wasn't able to find exactly where the stoplight is on the map. Is Skyline to the, like, if you're looking from the top, is it to the?
Skyline is to the east of the proposed project.
And how far to the east?
Approximately a quarter of a mile.
And, and that should be able to, having the light that far down will really still help the, the traffic in and out of the project?
Well, based on existing conditions, there are adequate gaps in the traffic stream for, for project ingress and egress. The presence of a traffic signal would, would not serve as much to, to affect project ingress as it would, I guess, mobility at the intersection and traffic safety at Hillcrest and Skyline.
And then I had just a couple of quick questions on, I don't quite, I'm curious about the two, and this is not a traffic question. I think this is probably for Mr. Alawami. That there's a tot lot next to the community building, and you said that's on a parking structure? Is that, is that level, is the parking structure underground, or how does that work? I haven't been able to really figure out the elevations.
Yeah, the parking, the community building, the tot lot is on top of the parking structure, and it's leveled parking structure, the top of it. And that's where the tot lot would be with the barbecue area and the community gathering place would be on top of the parking structure along with the community building.
Okay. Thank you. And then the other question is if building one that's, that's right on Hillcrest, the parking for, let's say, the apartments that are all the way, the closest to Hillcrest, is the parking way at the bottom? How do people, how close can you get a car? And how do people move into those apartments?
The parking will be in the parking structure, and there's stairs going up, which opens up into the courtyard, which could access both building one and two.
Okay. Yeah, some of it wasn't that obvious from all the plans I looked at. And then I wanted to just ask, we got this, got an email late this afternoon from one of the homeowners there, and they had asked for a number of concessions. So I just wanted to see where we were with that. One of them is that the city installed pedestrian crosswalks on Los Feliz Drive near the liquor store. Was there any consideration of that?
And are we talking about a mid, a proposed mid-block crosswalk on Los Feliz between Skyline and the project?
I'm, I'm just asking if you had any discussion with homeowners about that, or was that something that just came up?
To my, to my knowledge, the first time I heard of that issue was about 30 minutes ago, so.
Okay. So hopefully, there's a homeowner here that can elaborate on that. And then can you explain once more about the underground utility waiver? The homeowner here asked that Many Mansions remove adjacent utility poles on property lines and underground the utilities so that the developer at least improves the neighborhood appearance, and they gave a number of pictures. I didn't quite, you, you went pretty quickly over, Mr. Alawami, the underground utility waiver. There's six poles and what, what's happening there?
There are eight poles on, on, and adjacent to the site. Two of them will be removed because they serve existing houses that's going to be, that will be demolished. So that's six left. Four of them are off-site, and they serve, but adjacent to the property line, but they're off-site, and they serve existing residents, and the applicant is asking for a waiver because they're off their property. The other two are on their properties, and they're asking, again, for the waiver to, for them to remain. Two of them is in the west property line that serves two houses on the west side. If you can look at the UEW, there's 11x17 map with the UEW, and it shows on the west side, there's two poles that are on Many Mansions' property, but they serve existing houses to the west. Many Mansions is in discussion with the property owner that sent this request to work out a deal or a solution, see if there's undergrounding possibility to their house. But that, but that issue need to take into account the other pole. If they remove one pole, they have to look at the other pole that are connected together. So there are some issues need to be addressed and discussed with Edison to see the feasibility of doing that. And again, that the cost factor to do that.
So they're requesting a waiver for those poles. Let's say if this was a private developer, would they be granted the waiver with these conditions also?
Yes.
It's not just because it's Many Mansions?
No.
Okay. And I think that's it. Thank you very much, gentlemen.
Mr. Fox, questions? Good. Okay. No more questions of staff. Gentlemen, thank you very much. We will now go to the applicant. Mr. Schrader, followed by Forrest Freels, followed by Stephen Low. Good evening.
Council, city manager, city staff, members of the community. My name is Rick Schrader. I am the president of Many Mansions. With me tonight is Alex Russell, our director of housing and the project manager for this project, and Mark Pettit of Lauderbach &amp; Associates, our architect. In housing development, especially in affordable housing development, the biggest obstacle is the fear of the unknown. What will the project look like? How will it be constructed? Who will live there? How will it operate? What will be the impact on the neighborhood? Will this development benefit the community? But unlike many developers, Many Mansions is known. Our properties, our programs, our management are very well-known, especially to the city, who's been a close partner with Many Mansions for the past 30 years. But for our neighbors and our surrounding community, we were not as well-known. So we have spent the last year talking with them about our project, soliciting their input, listening to their ideas and concerns, and changing our project based upon their input. And as the staff noted, we held three formal community meetings. We held these meetings at our Osceana de Felice facility, and we picked Osceana so the neighborhood, so the neighbors could see what affordable housing was like. When we talk about developing affordable housing, what will it look like? What type of design would it have? What type of density would it have? And we wanted to allay their fears and concerns about what we meant by affordable housing. But in addition to these meetings, we held numerous small group meetings, especially with the homeowners associations, one-on-one meetings with the neighbors, and we shared information and ideas. And I think the result is, by listening to these neighbors, we have a much stronger project. This project has changed over time. We have changed the design. The staff report listed just a few of the numerous changes that we have made, and I would like to thank the community for their input. But in our meeting with the community, one of the first questions that was asked was, well, who will live at Many Mansions? Well, who will live at this Hillcrest project? Who lives at Many Mansions? And I would say that our residents are like everyone else. They come from all segments of the community. A typical household on our waiting list is a single female head of household with children who works and who lives in Thousand Oaks. And it is this household that our Hillcrest project is designed for. We are targeting this project for families. That's why we have a high number of two and three and even four bedrooms. The close proximity to the Conejo Elementary School makes the site ideal for families and for children. The families and children could walk to school and they don't have to drive. That's why we're also constructing a standalone community building, so we could run all our children's programs, our after-school homework program, our summer camp program. And indeed, there was an article over the weekend in the Los Angeles Times about this student who had been homeless most of her life, and that she was going off to Harvard. She had bounced around shelters and really had overcome great obstacles and had very little support in her life. Just think what can happen for a child when there is support, when they live in safe, decent, affordable housing, and then have, and have a caring community that can help them in their school. The neighbors wanted to know how many people would be living at this project? How many children would be living there? And some of our neighbors pictured that 600 people would be living there, 500 cars, 200 children. But again, based on our experience, based on our properties of similar profile, we estimate that only about 200 people will live there, and of that, about 80 children. Another concern was how would this property operate? Would it not just deteriorate like all other affordable housing that you might see in Los Angeles? Would Many Mansions just build it and then leave it? Again, we have an extensive track record on how we operate and manage properties. The community can see exactly how we do this. Like all of our properties, Many Mansions for Hillcrest will own and manage the property. We do all of the applicant screening, which includes extensive background and criminal background checks. We'll have an onsite resident manager. We do all of the maintenance and janitorial service. Hillcrest will have surveillance cameras. Our staff ensures that the apartment community is well-behaved, well-maintained, clean, and quiet, and we have every reason to keep it that way. Another concern was how would this development affect the neighborhood? That seems to be where most of your concerns might be. How would it fit into the neighborhood? Is this project too dense? What impact would this have on traffic, both on Los Feliz and Hillcrest? Well, again, much of our design was influenced by community and neighborhood input. As mentioned by staff, instead of just having one large building, we have five buildings. Instead of the buildings as originally conceived of being three-story, of having three-story elements, now only two of them have three-story elements, and those in the center part. We had lowered the height on Hillcrest and along Los Feliz. We changed the alignment of the driveway. We adopted a Mediterranean style to fit in with the general neighborhood. We added a subterranean garage, it's not a standalone garage, but a subterranean garage, again, to add more green space. We have the same amount of parking as any other developer. We did not ask for a waiver in the number of parking stalls. As to density, it should be stressed that we are seeking to change this to medium density, not to high density. And the largest parcel is already designated medium density. With a density bonus, we will have a density of 20 units, which is very similar to our other properties. Our Shadow Hills property has a density of 24 units per acre. Osceana de Felice is 18. The higher density, though, is needed to make the project financially feasible. Our funding is going to be based on the number of units that we have. The more units, the more financing. And since the cost to build a 40-unit apartment complex is not much different than the cost to build a 60-unit complex, it made financial sense to set it at 60 units. But traffic was the dominant issue and the concern of the neighbors. Now, based on their concerns, we are not having vehicle access onto Los Feliz. As to Hillcrest, we agree not to have any on-street parking in front of our property. We are also constructing a full bus stop on Hillcrest to encourage bus use. And even though we were not required to do so by staff, we conducted several third-party traffic studies at our own expense. And as staff mentioned, they found no adversal, adversarial, adverse additional traffic, even considering other potential projects on Los Feliz and Hillcrest. But it was really the high rate of speed the cars traveled that was really the most concern. So we told the neighbors that we would talk to the city and help them put up the traffic light at Skyline. And I'm very happy that staff had agreed to provide this additional funding, so we can put the traffic light. That's something that we want, and it's something that, if this project goes forward, our residents in Hillcrest would want. We also agree with them that really all on-street parking should be removed, that there should be a bike lane, and that there should be a center turn median. And we would be happy, again, to work with the consultant and city staff to see that. On Los Feliz, we would also like to continue to work with the neighbors to improve that street. We'd like to, we will extend our side, on our portion, the sidewalk, so it can go down to the elementary school. We would like to create some type of pedestrian crossing, so it can go to the other side. We'd also like to increase the street lighting. We agree that that street needs improvements. As to the lot line adjustment, I think there was a question on that. We did do a survey. When we purchased the property, we had an ULTA survey, who did find that the neighbor's property encroached, building encroached upon our property. Later discussions with her, she looked at it. She felt that it did not encroach. What we came up with was simply to allow her to have that property. We're not taking property from her. We're giving her property. However, if it turns out through additional studies and additional surveys that we do not need to make the lot line adjustment, we won't go forward with it. But the key is that we are not prejudicing her. The lot line adjustment issue was to give her the property so that she can maintain it. As to the utility pole, I think it should be stressed that all the utility poles and lines that will be servicing our property, we are undergrounding. The waiver has to do with the poles on our property that do not serve us, or the poles that are near our property but also do not serve us. We'd love to underground everything. We brought out people from Southern California Edison, and unfortunately, to underground two utility poles, the cost is over $50,000. And that's something our budget simply does not allow for. This, in terms of environmental and community impact reviews, this is not the last of it. All of our funding sources, our anticipated funding sources, especially the federal funding sources under the National Environmental Protection Act, will do a very similar SEQA-type analysis. It's called NEPA. They will all do their own environmental analysis, and looking at the community, looking at noise, looking at water, environmental issues. So this is not the last of it. Finally, though, the overriding, I think, issue for this, for this council is how will this development benefit the community? What interest does the city have in allocating over $5.5 million to create affordable housing? Well, we need more affordable housing in this community. Indeed, our own Many Mansions waiting list now has over 536 households. 55% of those households on our waiting list have children. 70- Seventy-four percent are homeless or under threat of homelessness. Indeed, the most recent housing homeless count shows that there was an 81% increase in the homeless population in the last three years. Twenty-eight percent of those persons counted homeless in Thousand Oaks were children. But I think you need to go beyond the numbers. We know from our experience, the council knows from their experience, that affordable housing provides stability, integration, it brings marginalized people back into the community, it provides a diverse workforce, it reduces overcrowding, and it does reduce crime. I believe that our Hillcrest project will enhance the neighborhood. What was there before? One of the houses on one of the lots was a duplex. We found that over 40 persons were living in that house. It was only supposed to be two families. The duplex was doubled and tripled up. People were living in the garage. There was a tent city behind the garage. It was squalid. It was dirty. It was dangerous. Is this what people want to preserve? That type of thing, unfortunately, goes on in Thousand Oaks. It's not well-known. I drove by Hillcrest. I'm one of those people that drive Hillcrest every day. I never saw that, but it was there. We're trying to get away from that. We're trying to solve that. Hillcrest will not solve all our affordable housing needs, but it will go a long way. So in closing, Many Mansions is not unknown. After tonight, our proposal is not unknown. Through this process, hopefully, we've been able to answer your questions and concerns. We therefore request the city council to adopt all the recommendations contained in the staff report. We agree to comply with all the 200 or so conditions attached to the project. We'd like to thank and compliment city staff on their hard work. They've been terrific. We'd like to thank the community and our neighbors for their input as well. And we're here to answer any of your questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Schrader. Questions to Mr. Schrader? None.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Well, thank you.
Next speaker is Forrest Fries, followed by Stephen Low, followed by Karen Low. Good evening, Mr. Fries.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor. I'm Forrest Fries. I live in the wonderful city of Thousand Oaks. I'm also the city's representative to the area housing authority of the County of Ventura. We are the HUD provider of over $26 million annually to the County of Ventura for affordable housing issues, and we are the city's affordable housing authority. It comes as no surprise to any of us here tonight that such affordable housing is in really short supply, has been that way. Our own waiting list at the Housing Authority of County of Ventura continues to require several years for applicants to get housing. So we are pleased to see the success of Many Mansions and their efforts to do their partnering in these tough economic times. The city council has long been a staunch supporter of Many Mansions, assisting them with many properties in the city of Thousand Oaks, and we have enjoyed working with them in the past and look forward to many more satisfying relationships and projects in the future. My message is a short one to the council. We say, support this project in its entirety, as represented tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Fries.
That concludes my comments.
Appreciate it. Appreciate you being down here tonight.
Thank you.
Stephen Low, followed by Karen Low, followed by Alan Doe.
I am Stephen Low, and I moved to Thousand Oaks in 1966. I'm a graduate of Thousand Oaks High School. I'm a retired college teacher, currently a software developer for the U.S. Navy at Port Wayne Eme. With regard to the current project, I share a 290-foot boundary with the Los Feliz parcel. I am very disappointed in the way Many Mansions, the city council, and Planning Commission have swept away our request for the undergrounding of the power poles on our adjacent boundary. My wife and I are like approximately 20 homeowners adjacent to the Los Feliz parcel who have proactively built or rebuilt our single-family houses from the foundation up over the last dozen years. Fourteen of these houses in the past six years. We and our immediate neighbors invested our low-density area of Los Feliz Drive because we put our faith in the previous city council's commitment to rebuilding our old section of Thousand Oaks, one of the oldest sections of Thousand Oaks. In my case, I replaced my gravel driveway with a 300-foot cobblestone driveway, and many of my immediate neighbors have also rebuilt the curb appeal of their houses in support of the previous city council. But I'm here tonight because this project does not support our low-density property values. Rather, according to real estate professionals I've consulted, including several reputable appraisers, this higher-density project will lower our low-density property values by somewhere between 15 and 25% each. In my case, that represents a loss in excess of $160,000, even at current values. This is absolutely unfair to me and my wife and to our fellow single-family homeowners. With all my heart, I do not believe any one of you in the city council would have let this happen in your own backyard. With all my heart, I've asked for the power lines on our boundaries to be undergrounded, but the Planning Commission looked the other way, supporting Many Mansions waiver, and I believe that there were improper behind-the-scenes dealings, and these may have consciously or unconsciously constituted collusion. And therefore...
Mr. Low, you need to wrap up.
I formally request the county reporting agencies and the local newspaper to initiate an impartial collusion investigation. In support of this investigation, I've initiated a website, StopManyMansions.com, to publicize and post the results of such an investigation.
Mr. Low, thank you very much. Appreciate it. Karen Low, followed by Alan Doe, followed by Nancy Adamsick.
Good evening, council members. Mayor, you may remember me from several other meetings where we've had impassioned pleas for this consideration. As you know, we would prefer very much that...
Would you mind giving us your name and city of residence, just for the record?
Did I forget?
Yes, ma'am.
Karen Low, and I'm in Thousand Oaks, and we're on the adjacent property on Los Feliz. As my husband explained, we moved in about 10 years ago, and we've been steadily investing in the property, believing that we were going to be in a more desirable area. As time went by, we planned to live there till we die. The properties around us have been currently built up, and they built the Morning Grove Way properties two years after we moved in. Shortly after, the property next to us was bought by a developer, Skip, and he told us that he was required to underground those utility lines to develop the property. And the property across the street from us also had to underground adjacent lines, even though they weren't on the property line, in order to get the city to agree to let them develop that property. That, considering, I know that Ms. Bill has been down our street, and maybe some of you have been down our street recently, you might notice that the trunk lines, the electrical wires that come down Los Feliz are so intense, you can't even get radio signal on that street. Many of those lines end up ending at our property and coming up to our house. And where we have trees right now that mask them and they aren't obvious, once Many Mansions takes the trees down and puts up a wall, we will have nothing but stark lines. And our whole street is already full of stark lines, and we've been steadily breaking down piece by piece, trying to get the street to rehabilitate and look the way the redevelopment project had intended for Old Town to start looking. The last few times we've met with a community meeting with Many Mansions, we've had amicable discussions where we were encouraged that they were going to underground those lines for us. And we believed we had an agreement right up until the day of the city planners' meeting, where they announced we had an agreement, and then told us afterwards that they had no intention of undergrounding those lines. I would like you to understand that many of the things that are being said after we speak may not be true, and we have no chance to rebut them. We were not allowed to rebut them when they contradicted them at the last meeting. I would, I have many times brought up the fact that we need a way for the children to cross the street because the egress from the back of this property will go directly to the liquor store. There are going to be a large number of children, and...
Ms. Low, you need to wrap up.
I am. And so we've discussed this. I do think that the city can help by trying to protect the children that are coming out of the back of that property by putting in crosswalks. The biggest problem is the high-density housing at the other end of the street where the other...
Ms. Low, that's it. Thank you very much. Appreciate your comments.
All right. Thank you.
Before we go further, it's a very short period of time to talk, so talk quickly, guys. Mr. Doe, Nancy Adamsick, followed by Abby Clark.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, good evening. My name is Alan Doe. I live in Thousand Oaks. I'm representing three HOAs this evening: Westlake Villas, Villas at Westlake, and Villa Santori. These three HOAs comprise 113 units on the north side of Hillcrest, across from the proposed project. We first spoke to council at the end of last year, when this project initially surfaced. At that time, we asked for a softer, gentler implementation. I am happy to report that many, not all, many of our concerns have been met. Setbacks have been adjusted. The building height, which has been talked about on Hillcrest, has been lowered. The owner's participation agreement, also pending approval this weekend, has been developed to address the traffic signal problem at Skyline and Hillcrest. And there's other near-term adjustments to parking on Hillcrest. Kudos go to both the city staff and Many Mansions for making this happen. We are grateful for these changes. There remains one other initiative which has been mentioned tonight. That is MI 2039, which is the bike lane project for Hillcrest. Beth Baden will attest that I am a first-class pest in finding out what's happening there. The three sets of possible designs preliminary that were talked about, we have looked at. If I leave you with one message, when those come up for consideration later this year, what is currently known as Option 3 is the one we support. Two bike lanes, two travel lanes in each direction, a center-turning lane, which we think is absolutely critical for not only the HOAs but for the Many Mansions project. That's it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Doe. Appreciate it. Nancy Adamsick? Please correct me on your name.
I'm sorry?
Please correct me on your name.
Adamsick. Adamsick. Very close.
Thank you.
Mayor Glancy, members of city council, my name is Nancy Adamsick. Excuse me. I'm president of the Homeowners Association of Villa Santorini, which is located on Hillcrest Drive, just to the east of the proposed Many Mansions project. We have a total of 45 units, and we are in complete agreement with Alan Doe's comments this evening. In addition to his comments, I would just like to stress, safety, safety, safety. I have lived here in Thousand Oaks for 22 years and have seen what's happened on Hillcrest and Los Feliz, but particularly on Hillcrest. We're thrilled that the Thousand Oaks Planning Commission and Many Mansions agrees with us that a stoplight at Skyline and Hillcrest is essential, and we also support the bike lanes along Hillcrest. It is tragic that it took the death of Mr. Mackey, a much-loved teacher at Westlake High School, riding his bike to work, to push this projected bike lane project finally through. It's my sincere hope that we will not have to experience another Hillcrest fatality as cars sit stopped, waiting to make left-hand turns, and be assured that we get a center-turn lane on Hillcrest Drive. With the addition of 60 more housing units in the Many Mansions project, of which their only ingress and egress of vehicles is on Hillcrest Drive, this section of Hillcrest will have even more vehicles making dangerous left-hand turns on a daily basis. In the restriping project for Hillcrest Drive, we feel the center-turn lane is imperative and at least as important as the proposed bike lanes. Therefore, as concerned homeowners, we support this Option 3 for the restriping project, which includes the center-turn lane, bike lanes, no parking on the street, and it's the only viable option. I actually have all three plans here. We also hope that this plan will be approved prior to the construction of the Many Mansions project.
Ms. Adamsick, you need to wrap.
I'm done. I thank you for that, and if you have any questions about the plans or what we expect.
Thank you for being down. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Abby Clark, followed by Rudy Gonzalez, followed by Mel Silverberg.
Mayor Glancy and members of the Thousand Oaks City Council. My name is Abby Clark, and I live in Thousand Oaks. I represent the homeowners of the 36 units of Westlake Vista's townhomes as president of our HOA. Our complex is located almost directly across Hillcrest Drive from the proposed 60-unit Many Mansions project. We are here to advise that while many of our concerns from the project, such as the traffic signal and elevations, have been addressed through the planning process, the lone issue that is yet unresolved is the addition of a center-turn lane on Hillcrest, which has been a concern of ours since the beginning of the project. Much discussion over the center-turn lane was generated at the Planning Commission meeting last month, with the outcome being that the center-turn lane would be added as part of City Public Works Project MI 2039, Hillcrest Restriping. Since that date, we have seen a draft version of the three preliminary design alternatives that are being evaluated for MI 2039, which will, as we understand, be brought to city council later this summer for selection and approval. And we, in conjunction with the two other complexes along Hillcrest, wish to add our collective voices to the urgent request for adoption and implementation of Option Number Three of the proposed Hillcrest Restriping project. Option 3 features two travel lanes on each side of the street, as well as bike lanes and the much-needed center-turn lane. Westlake Vista is located on blind curves in both directions, making it very difficult and exceedingly dangerous to enter and exit our driveway by making left turns onto or from Hillcrest. The almost total lack of visibility due to parked cars, in addition to the absence of a center-turn lane, has resulted in numerous traffic accidents and very recently, a fatality. Lack of clear visibility on both sides of Hillcrest Drive due to the on-street parking currently permitted is a definite safety issue for all residents in this locale and will surely be a problem for the Many Mansion residents as well. Thank you. We just want to hear it. We want to make sure that you hear our recommendation for adopting Option Number Three. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Rudy Gonzalez, followed by Mel Silverberg, followed by Sister Lisa McGaffin.
Good evening, Mayor Glancy, council members and staff. My name is Rudy Gonzalez. I'm a 12-year resident of the city of Thousand Oaks. I serve as a member of the advisory committee for Many Mansions. My company has been supportive of Many Mansions for several years, and I have participated in several Many Mansions events as a volunteer. I am very supportive of the organization's Hillcrest project and hope that you will take the action this evening to adopt the recommendations of the Planning Commission and staff. As you know, there are so few opportunities to provide quality housing for those in our community that need it most. From what I have learned about the project, Many Mansions has been able to put together a project that addresses this important need. They have done so in a responsible manner that addresses the concerns of the surrounding community and incorporates features that make it an environmentally friendly project. Many Mansions has a long history of developing quality projects that address the need for affordable housing. They also demonstrate their long-term commitment to their residents by conducting programs that strengthen families that live in their developments. I moved to Thousand Oaks because I was impressed with the way the community has been developed. I believe that Many Mansions Hillcrest project will enhance the surrounding neighborhood and the community as a whole, and I urge you to support the project. Thank you.
Hold on. Mr. Gonzalez? Rudy, come on down.
Mr. Gonzalez, good evening. Quick question. Did you have any involvement in the negotiations for the undergrounding costs at all?
I have not been involved. Our planning department have been the key contacts.
And SCE doesn't have any waivers for affordable housing or anything like that?
No, I'm afraid not, no.
Okay.
It'd be definitely expensive for other customers, and they wouldn't be too happy about it. Sorry.
Good try, though. Mr. Silverberg, you're up, followed by Sister Lisa, followed by Martina Romanoff.
Good evening. Thank you, Mayor Glancy, and members of the council, and Mr. Mitnick. My name is Mel Silverberg. I'm a city resident for over 15 years. I'm a volunteer with Haverine Bene Brith, which is affiliated with Bene Brith International, and through them, the Senior Housing Network, which is a nationwide network. Haverine Bene Brith has worked with Many Mansions, and I... Haverine Bene Brith has worked with Many Mansions, and I have, over the past three years, exploring possible joint ventures: family and senior housing. I am pleased to speak tonight in strong support of the Hillcrest Affordable Housing Project, and I offer the following brief points. Many Mansions is a community-friendly developer, manager, and operator of quality, low-income, affordable housing. If you tour their properties, and I have, you will quickly see the proof. Many Mansions provides more than housing and supportive services for residents, helping people add quality to their lives. Many Mansions is a good neighbor. Their properties have enhanced the appearance of their neighborhoods. This is assured by continued oversight by the city during all phases of the project, including operation. Hillcrest Project will bring needed affordable housing to the community. We need more affordable housing, especially in this down economy. Many good people are losing their jobs and would become homeless if we did not house such housing. Many families in the city are at risk of becoming homeless. It is less expensive to the community to put people in a home where they also have hope. Hope is a priceless commodity. We all like to think about Thousand Oaks as that shining city on the hill. When the Hillcrest project is built, it will shine even more. Thank you.
Thank you, Mel. Appreciate your being here. Sister Lisa, followed by Martina Romanoff, followed by Lynn Bullock.
Good evening, Mayor Glancy and council members. My name is Sister Lisa McGaffin, and I'm a 34-year resident of Thousand Oaks. I'm also a member of the Board of Directors of Many Mansions, and I'm here tonight to urge your full support. Now, as you heard earlier, there are approximately 540 households on our waiting list, and obviously they all qualify as low-income. But many of the individuals who could live in the Hillcrest project are employed in various service industries, so you might choose to think of this property as workforce housing. In fact, the need for this type of housing was recently described in the Thousand Oaks Boulevard-specific plan. Although the plan refers to residential housing along the Boulevard, this Hillcrest property is clearly within walking distance. So let's review what the plan says. And this is a quote: "Allow higher-density residential housing at certain locations along Thousand Oaks Boulevard with incentives for low-to-moderate income, with a priority for city employees, teachers, police officers, service-sector workers, nurses, Hillcrest-- excuse me, healthcare workers, et cetera. This will reduce commuter traffic on our freeways and thus reduce pollution and congestion." So as you drive along Thousand Oaks Boulevard, Hillcrest, and Duesenberg, you will see that there are potential employees who could benefit by living at this new Hillcrest project. In my 14 years as a Many Mansions board member, I've had the privilege and the honor of coming here on many occasions to speak on behalf of a proposed project. I want to conclude by thanking you and the other commissioners and council members who have shared our vision in making other properties possible. Thank you, and God bless our community.
Thank you, Sister Lisa. Lynn Bullock, followed by Jacqueline Tobin, followed by Robert Lewis.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the City Council. My name is Lynn Bullock. I am a Thousand Oaks resident, and I'm here to represent the Ventura County Homeless and Housing Coalition. On behalf of its executive director, Kathy Birdnicki, also a Thousand Oaks resident, you all have received a letter from Kathy, and I am here tonight to point out some of the points of that letter. On behalf of the Ventura County Homeless and Housing Coalition, I urge you to accept staff's recommendations with regard to this property and the project proposed for it. Specifically, VCHHC supports the mitigated negative declaration and mitigated monitoring plan, the general plan amendment to medium density, the zoning change, the merger of the five lots into one, the design of the overall project, and the waivers regarding the overhead utility pole and the drip line for the oak tree on the property. In its 2009 housing element, the City of Thousand Oaks specifies the need to construct 396 units of housing for those at very low or extremely low incomes. This project will be important in meeting that goal by generating 15% of those units. I don't need to remind you of how many people are on Many Mansions' waiting list. It's been done before tonight. But I would like to say that Many Mansions has long been an effective partner with the City of Thousand Oaks in constructing, maintaining, and managing high-quality housing. In additions to creating housing, Many Mansions provides a wide array of services for residents of their properties, including tutoring, literacy, career preparation, food assistance, case management, and service coordination. For all those reasons I've outlined here, you must follow the guidelines set forth in your general plan and housing element for Thousand Oaks and vote yes on this project. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bullock. Appreciate your being here tonight. Jacqueline Tobin, followed by Robert Lewis, followed by Teresa Lewis.
Hi, my name is Jacqueline Tobin. I am a Thousand Oaks resident. For 32 years, I've been in Thousand Oaks, and I've lived on Los Feliz Drive for 24 years. I am at 2685 Los Feliz Drive, where the lot line adjustment is taking place, and we are working together and working with Many Mansions to resolve that issue. But my other concern, I agree with Stephen about what he talked about, the property values, that's, I think, a lot of the neighborhood's worry, is that, but also the traffic on Los Feliz and the safety, because there are inconsistent sidewalks, and at night, the lighting is not good at all. I walk my dogs at night quite a bit, and the other night, I was walking towards the school, past Quinta Vista, and had someone approach me from the other side that I didn't see until they were about 10 feet in front of me. That's how dark that was. So I think that's, you know, a lot of people's concern, is the safety on that. With more residents become, you know, more traffic, more pedestrians, more kids on bicycles and skateboards, which is one of my concerns. I see so many kids skateboarding in the street, and that hill there is going to attract them to play there. So I would hope that if this all goes through, that we get a lot more attention to that area, to help us to keep it safe for everybody and to keep the neighborhood, you know, consistent with the Many Mansions project, keep it all growing at an equal pace. So that's it.
Thank you, Ms. Tobin. Robert Lewis, followed by Teresa Lewis, followed by Nick Kidway.
I'm sorry, my other half went home. He has to get up 11:00, 30 in the morning.
Thanks for saying.
Members of City Council, my name is Teresa Lewis, and I'm a resident of Thousand Oaks for the past eight years and have been a resident of Many Mansions for eight years. Before that, I was 15 years homeless. I was and still am low-income and disabled. So I would like to thank you for your generous support of us past Many Mansions projects, and it is through your forward-thinking and generosity that others like myself have been able to build new lives for themselves and their families. I am one of the people the future neighbors are afraid of. They have no fear. We are nothing but hard-working people who care about our homes and our neighbors. I would like to reassure you, the City Council, and you, our future neighbors, we are good neighbors. I am willing to talk to anyone about Many Mansions, its services, and what it does for our neighborhood. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, Ms. Lewis. Martina Romanoff? Thanks. Nick Kidway? Followed by Barry Balcom, followed by Karen Ingram.
Good evening, Mayor Louis-- Mayor-- I'm thinking about Mayor Louis from '91. I guess--
You have a very good memory.
I'm a 30-year resident, and my name is Nick Kidway. Mayor Glancy, I am disappointed in that you have not mentioned your standards of operations that allow extra time for residents, which are your rules, and when only two minutes are available, it would behoove you to let the residents know those rules. So if somebody wants to spend more time, like there's a gentle lady that has given PowerPoint presentation that is in the green packet that makes an excellent case that an MND is not adequate, that an EIR is required. I spoke at the Planning Commission meeting, and I said the same thing, and my information is also in the green packet. Home Depot on Hampshire Road, which was a similar use from the Kmart store, had an MND, which this body or the Planning Commission rejected and had them do a complete EIR. You have cumulative effects of having this kind of housing, and it is such a sad day that so many low-income housing advocates do not look kindly upon those people who are living in the neighborhood, who live in these small homes, which are so few in this community. And we are going to destroy those homes in order to have these condominiums. It is just not right. And with the reduction in the price, like the gentleman said, and I hope people will go to StopManyMansions.com and register there, because if this thing passes, we should really go to court and join hands, because Lang Ranch was-- EIR was rejected, as you know, Mayor, and this MND will not fly, and you folks are partners with Many Mansions. So there's a greater burden on you, Mayor, to be impartial and fair.
Thank you, Ms. Kidway. Well said. Barry Balcom, followed by Karen Ingram, followed by Barbara Arnold.
My name's Barry Balcom, and I currently live in Camrio Springs. And I just want to say I'm humbled by the opportunity to stand here before you and champion the cause of Many Mansions. I, too, moved here in 1967, and I am a fellow Lancer of Steve over here. My whole family lives here in Thousand Oaks, and I am a caring citizen, a caring business, a caring city partner of Thousand Oaks. I try and do my best to give back to this community. I participate in Manne as often as I can and other things throughout the city. When I was a kid, I helped rake the Fiori Fields way back then. I mean, I love this community. I have a passion, a commitment, and compassion that I see up in front of me, and that's of being service to others. And I've had the opportunity to witness the staff and people of Many Mansions over the last 15-plus years. And I'll tell you, the never-ending time, effort, and commitment to this community is second to none, except for maybe the people sitting across from me. I don't know how I'd react if I was my fellow Lancer here, but you know what? I feel that, you know, once he gets to know the people of Many Mansions, the people of the community, he might have a different take on it. And I invite him and his wife to go to a Bowls of Hope function with me as my guest and maybe see what it's all about. My name's Barry, and I am a Thousand Oaks citizen in my heart. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Barry. Karen Ingram, followed by Barbara Arnold, who is our last speaker.
Good evening, Karen Ingram, Thousand Oaks, actually in the neighborhood, two blocks from here, in an affordable housing complex that the city had foresight to build in 1985. And in my day job, I am a social worker, and I work with people who have a desperate need for affordable housing. Although I am in Los Angeles now, historically, I had the privilege of working with Many Mansions. Now I am a donor, and I buy a lot of bowls at the Bowls of Hope so I can give them out as gifts. You've heard a lot about the agency. You know the agency's history. I'd like to point out the need for some of the housing that they talked about. The working families, the pool cleaners, the waiters and waitresses, those are the kinds of folks that need affordable housing that I work with. I also work with people with developmental disabilities who only have supplemental security income. It's about $900 a month. They need that very, very low-income housing that's going to go into this project, because there is nothing. A recent study put out by Priced Out, a national endeavor, shows that people who receive supplemental security income need 125% of their income to live in Ventura County. Clearly, that can't be done. And so we need these types of projects so that people with developmental disabilities and others who receive supplemental security income can stay in their community and their community of choice. So I strongly urge your support of this project. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Barbara Arnold, welcome.
My name is Barbara Arnold Herser. I'm a citizen of Moor Park. It just struck me tonight. I first was so impressed of Thousand Oaks 28 years ago, when I came here and wanted to live here, but I couldn't afford it, because I wanted to stay home with my children, even though I was a young engineering student. And so I moved to Moor Park and became a resident there. And I've watched what's happened here and have always been impressed with the foresight of Many Mansions and of the council supporting them, acknowledging that there are sectors of our community that just don't earn the amount of money that it takes to actually survive at the level that many of us enjoy. And it's just so beautiful to see a balanced community, so I commend you for that support. I'm in favor of the project. I'm hopeful that there can be a resolution for the people that are in pain here, that are in neighborhoods as well, and I know that Many Mansions strives to create that. I'm also now an executive director of Make It a Reality, which works with creating self-sufficiency and address the root causes of poverty. So we're hoping to add even more benefit to a project that has this amount of stability. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Arnold. That's the last of our public speakers. There are 21 statement cards, 19 in favor of, two against. Questions to staff? Staff comments?
I just have some very brief comments with regard to the EIR issue. I did have an opportunity to go through the green packet this evening, and in particular, I had a chance to look at Mr. Kidway's comments. I've reviewed them in detail. Again, our position has not changed. The issues that are addressed in Mr. Kidway's letter, most of which have no relationship to the California Environmental Quality Act, and as I've indicated previously, and Mr. Larry Tay here was with the Traffic Division, has indicated there are no significant traffic impacts associated with this project, and this project is actually going above and beyond any requirement in that respect to provide the traffic signalization. The also, the other studies that are being undertaken to reconfigure the road have nothing to do with this project. So the preparation of a mitigated negative declaration is, in fact, the appropriate document here. The Planning Commission agreed with that and supported that decision unanimously, so I just wanted to indicate that as part of the record.
Thank you. Any other comments of staff? If not, we'll have questions of staff.
Mr. Mayor, I would like to address some of the concerns of the citizens. I had heard the possibility of a landscape median or inquiries over a potential landscape median being proposed for Hillcrest Drive. That's not included in any of the three alternatives, and from my professional opinion, it would not be a very attractive alternative. What you'd end up doing is restricting access and therefore inconveniencing a lot of residents, forcing them to make right turns and either going all the way around using alternative streets and placing burden on other roadway facilities, or making U-turns, you know, on Hillcrest Drive to achieve the direction that they intended to go if they were able to make that left turn. And based on the width of the roadway, any U-turn that would be made would have to be from the number-one lane, because the street is not wide enough to, you know, to accommodate cars turning from like a left-turn pocket. So what you would have is a situation no different from what you have today: cars stopping in the number-one lane, trying to find a gap in the traffic. But in addition to that, you'd have restricted access, which would probably greatly inconvenience a lot of the residents on both sides of the street. So as far as a landscape median, and we could study that if that is your intention, but we would not recommend it at this time. And as far as potential striping changes on Hillcrest Drive-- And as far as potential striping changes on Hillcrest Drive, option three, that was, that received so much support, that's the one that consists of a two-way left-turn lane down the middle, two travel lanes in each direction, and a bike lane on each side of the roadway. What it does not provide for is parking on either side of the, of the street. And again, the consultant in their final project report would provide pros and cons of each of the alternatives, which would be shared at future meetings and public hearings. But the council would ultimately decide, I guess, which, which alternatives, based on what they feel is most, most important. And I heard issues, concerns over sight distance on Hillcrest and Skyline. A couple, two years ago, I believe, there was a no-parking zone created on the south side of Hillcrest Drive, just west of Skyline, to assist with sight visibility for vehicles traveling northbound, looking to the west. And since that no-parking zone was implemented, the accident rate, I guess, the accidents that are susceptible to correction, or for which, you know, right-angle collisions or accidents which involve sight distance have reduced. In fact, there have been no reported accidents since 2007, for which sight distance was a primary collision factor, and that was in part attributed to the no-parking zone that was, that was installed. In light of the citizens' concerns, staff has proposed possibly extending that no-parking zone to provide even more, or to enhance visibility. But that would require removing parking in front of two or three parcels on the south side of Hillcrest. And what we've done was sent notification letters to the residents, informing them of our proposal, asking them for our input, and we are awaiting their responses. It's the summertime, some of them are on vacation, and the last thing we would want to do is to remove their parking, and they find out about it when they get back, trying to unload their luggage. So, you know, pending their, their input, we may have the ability to increase that no-parking zone on the south side of Hillcrest, which would enhance sight visibility at the intersection. As far as a mid-block crosswalk on Los Feliz Drive, mid-block crosswalks are not typically used in residential streets. It is, it is legal to cross a residential street, whether or not there's a crosswalk or not, whether you're at an intersection or not, and we feel that painting a marked crosswalk would, would create a false sense of security, you know, especially if there are no sidewalks on either side of the street, where it doesn't connect to anything, drivers don't expect it, especially if it's their first time driving on those Feliz, and it may give the pedestrians a false sense of security, and sometimes there's no worse thing you can do than, than that. As far as sidewalks on Los Feliz, there are a lot of issues pertaining to, you know, achieving that. Number one is the right-of-way. You know, Los Feliz does not have the right-of-way width to accommodate sidewalks on, throughout the entire segment. And, you know, a lot of that real estate is currently private property, and without a dedication, it would not be possible to construct that sidewalk. And I guess there's also the issue of funding, and the city does maintain a list of future sidewalk projects. Staff has, our capital improvements group has identified a list of 20 or 30 sidewalk roadway segments that could potentially be candidates for future sidewalk projects. And I believe Los Feliz Drive between the Boulevard and Duesenberg is, is on that list. Exactly where it falls, I'm not, I'm not sure. But again, when funding becomes available, the design process begins and construction would follow. But that would be based on some sort of sidewalk necessity priority, and, you know, as funding becomes available, the higher priority streets receive their sidewalks, and then so on and so forth. We would go down that list. Did I leave anything out? Would anyone care? Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Ms. Bill's opinion.
Thank you. I have a couple of questions. Who would be able to address the issue of street lighting? Mr. Alawami, perhaps? Or would it be Mr. Tay?
I, I can do my best. As far as street lighting, from what I understand, it's, a request for street lighting can be initiated with a written request to the Public Works Director. And what would happen then is our construction management and right-of-way group would conduct a preliminary study to determine the level of support for, for the streetlights. He would survey the households on the affected segment, the segment of the street for which streetlights are proposed on, to see if there is adequate support for these measures.
Okay. So I know how, how this whole process for the application works, but was this discussed for this particular project, since some of the residents brought it up?
No, it was not discussed as part of this project. It's unrelated to the traffic impacts.
I see. Okay. And then also, it was mentioned tonight, four bedrooms are part of the complexes here, and I don't know whether Mr. Schrader would be able to answer that, or you. How many people do we normally fit into a four-bedroom apartment? And how many square feet is it?
I think Many Mansions could answer that in their rebuttal. With regard to the lighting, street lighting, there is a general condition on the project requiring streetlights to be installed for the project itself, not for the neighborhood. So street lighting would be part of the project design, based on the public work standards.
Okay. And now the other issue was that there had been an agreement, a verbal agreement, to underground the utility lines, and this was alleged tonight, that this agreement somehow fell apart without notifying the residents. Who can speak to that?
That ongoing discussion was between Many Mansions and the property owner. So I don't know if there's an agreement or not. Many Mansions could, could address that issue.
And let me see here. What would be the additional cost? You mentioned approximately $50,000 for the utility poles, but what would be the additional cost of some of the safety measures regarding the bike lanes and the striping, if those were to be taken into consideration? Do we know that? Because I would imagine that that cost is not included in this.
No, that, those, the costs of those improvements would be funded by, by the city, not, not by Many Mansions. And we would get a better idea of the costs upon completion of the consultant's work.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any further questions of staff? In that case, gentlemen, thank you very much. We'll hear from the applicant for rebuttal. Mr. Schrader?
Members of the council, thank you. I'd be happy to answer any additional questions. With respect to the question-
Mr. Schrader, what is your name and city of residence?
It's Rick Schrader, the resident of Oak Park. Okay. There's a question on our two proposed four-bedroom units. The four-bedroom units are 1,472 square feet, and the occupancy standard allows between six and nine persons. There was a question with respect to any alleged agreement to underground utility poles. We never had any agreement, oral, written, implied, or otherwise, to underground the utility poles. We agreed to look into it. We had a representative from Southern California Edison come out. They gave an estimate of around $50,000 to do, to do that. We don't have that in our budget. Our funding sources would certainly not pay for such of activity, because it doesn't affect or doesn't benefit our project. It's on someone else's land that benefits someone else's property. What we thought we had an agreement with was to put a sidewalk, to continue the sidewalk over their land. I wanted to clear something up. There is no sidewalk on the other side of Los Feliz. On our side of Los Feliz, there is a sidewalk that goes all the way to the school, except for maybe a, I don't know, 15-foot stretch, and then our property, which we are putting a sidewalk in. So there's only about a 15-foot stretch, and that's where we agreed to put that sidewalk in, if we had their permission. Apparently, we don't have their permission now, so there won't be any sidewalk. But the issue of no sidewalk is really for the other side of the street. That doesn't have a sidewalk, as you're walking towards the school. And those are really the only two things I wanted to clear up, but if there are any other questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Thank you very much. Questions? Mr. Schrader, yes. Go ahead.
Mr. Schrader, how many of those four-bedroom units do you have scheduled for this, in this proposal? If you can refresh my memory.
Two.
Just two?
Two, yeah.
I see. Okay.
We want, we had more, but in reducing the height to two stories instead of three stories, we had to cut down some of the bedroom sizes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Schrader.
Okay, thank you.
With that, we'll close the public hearing and listen to discussion and/or motion. Mr. Fox.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. Couple of observations. First, on balance, I think Many Mansions and the residents, the adjacent homeowners associations need to be congratulated. These are very, very difficult issues. I've commented over the years that affordable housing projects, no matter how well-planned and the experience, they're very, very difficult. Land use issues for the council to deal with and Planning Commission to deal with. The testimony tonight indicated that the vast majority of issues were not just listened to by Many Mansions, but addressed and satisfactorily to many of the adjacent property owners and residents. The outstanding issues with respect to striping and traffic, I think the staff's comments and the ability to go back and re-stripe if, if, you know, safety is, becomes an issue for more safety, I think, is a reasoned effort. Also, I don't think, I agree with staff, I don't think we want to do anything when folks are on vacation, and they come back and they can't park in front of their house. That's not my idea of being a good neighbor. But the issue really boils down to a need for the community, a balanced need for the community. And Many Mansions, without question, has an outstanding track regarding this community. There is, there really, it's not debatable. All the things that Mr. Schrader talked about do, in fact, occur. They are onsite, self-managed, self-policed, a high level of security, high level of commitment to the community, quality, quality housing. It really cannot be, it really cannot be disputed. And it adds value to our community. If you look at what's going on across the state, even here in Ventura County, I think unemployment now is at 10%, 11%. We need workforce housing in Ventura County, and we need it here in Thousand Oaks. And it's very difficult to provide in Thousand Oaks because of our land costs, very, very expensive proposition. That's why the city's putting in so much money for this project and what we've done in the past, because we have a commitment to balanced housing in our community. We have very, very expensive, very exclusive areas to live in. We have more moderate neighborhoods, and then we have housing for workforce service employees who provide the services, and we've heard about them here tonight, the folks that, that do the services in our neighborhoods, in our restaurants. I think it's important that they have an opportunity, at least in part, to live in this community. I don't think Thousand Oaks can be the affordable housing Mecca for Ventura County. I don't think that's reasonable, but we do supply our fair share. And this project, at 60 units, goes a long way of doing it. It's cited precisely where this type of project makes sense. And we try to spread it out throughout the community, and in this particular area, it's close to the downtown area. I think Sister Lisa talked about the specific plan on the Boulevard. It just makes a lot of sense. So with that, I'm going to recommend approval of the recommendations one, two, and three. Do you want me to handle these separately, Amy? Okay. Then I'm going to move to approve the negative declaration, number 270, and the mitigation monitoring plan.
Excuse me, Councilmember Fox. I meant do 8A1 and 8A2 separate, so you can move all three of this one, and then we would do the other one separate vote.
Okay, that's how it was going to go. So one, two, and three. Move approval for.
Ms. Bill, Ellevania.
Thank you. Without really repeating much of what we've heard tonight, we all know the product that Many Mansions delivers. But I also have to take into consideration the neighbors. And yes, Many Mansions has been able to address most of the problems or concerns, thankfully. But we have neighbors who are concerned about property value, because their general plan is being changed from low density to medium density. And the least that we could do, maker of the motion, is to at least give them the very little that they're asking for, namely, the undergrounding of utilities. They're asking for that. We already, you already addressed the safety issues, which we obviously need to look at. So that is something that I think would really be fair and balanced, because they, they may have issues with, with property values. We don't know. They said, based on appraisals, there is an issue. And we want to help low-income families, but we also want to respect our neighbors. So would you consider including the underground utilities in your motion?
Can I respond back?
Yes, please.
You know, I, I don't think it's an issue of whether we like to do it or not. I think it's an issue of finance. Yeah, I've sufficiently looked at it, and I think, you know, concur that Many Mansions does not have it within their budget to do the undergrounding. And so absent some other funding source from the city's part, I don't know how we can do that. It's not a question of whether we want to do it. It's $50,000 that I don't think is included in this project, in what already is a $5 million plus project. So, and I don't know if the housing funds can actually be used for that, because it's not associated with housing. I'm going to defer to Mr. Mitnick on that, to see if that's even a possibility.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, this project, as the council member mentioned, has surpassed $5.5 million. If you factor in the $220,000 for the traffic signal, you're looking at upwards of $96,000 per unit, and from the redevelopment and city assistance, which is a very high figure for affordable housing projects. And if you factor the true cost of the project, I believe it's $26.5 million or a number to that effect, you're looking upwards of $450,000 per unit to do this project. Shows you how expensive it is to do affordable housing. So we would, at this point, strongly caution council not to put any more city or redevelopment money into this project. The range of numbers target for us is over 1,700. This is just 59 units, so we have another 1,600-plus units to go. So if you use your money wisely, that would be our recommendation. Thank you.
Is there any comments?
I had a few comments. I think Mr. Fox did cover most of them. First of all, I wanted to say congratulations to Mr. Tay for your first city council meeting. You did a very good job. And secondly, I don't, you know, I think with everybody sitting in here, sometimes we forget that, that this is truly astounding, what is happening tonight, that you are putting in 60 affordable units, and you have managed to deal with most of the concerns of the neighbors. I, I can't imagine any other place that this would happen, and I think a lot of it is, of course, the reputation of Many Mansions. They've done an outstanding job already in the city, but it is, it's really something that this is, this is happening this evening, and the units are very nice, and I think that they are going to be very well-managed, and there is truly a need in Thousand Oaks for this. I, I do feel, you know, the neighbors have, hopefully, most of their issues have been addressed. I do agree that the undergrounding is problematic, too, and we have so many affordable units that we still have to build to put another 50,000 in, but, you know, maybe something will work out along the way. So I want to commend everybody for that. And then I also wanted to say that this was kind of, I think, five years ago, four years ago, that we first looked at, you know, what's the right way to do affordable housing, and it was the council that said, hey, you know, let's look at land banking, and it really all worked the way it was supposed to, that, that Many Mansions really took that to heart. There was a private developer that was going to develop this area, and I think somehow with the way things turned out, we couldn't have asked for a better solution. So I commend everybody involved, and I think it's going to be a great project. I hope Mr. Schrader continues to work with the neighbors. And the last thing was the, the issue with the three home, I think it was three homeowners associations. I have been asking about this for the last five years, and it appears that, you know, within the next year, we are going to get Hillcrest restriped. I really do think that the best solution is to put a center median there. I'd like to see the bike lanes also, and, you know, I don't know which, I haven't looked at the three options, but I'm definitely going to- at the three options, but I'm definitely going to push to have that done also. That's obviously separate from the Many Mansions project. But when we do that, and we have, you know, have the light being put in, I think many of your, as you have said tonight, many of your issues have been addressed. And with that, I will be supporting Councilmember Fox's motion.
Thank you. Ms. Bill D'Elipina, I believe I may have cut you off early. You have a comment?
Just, just very briefly, I would like to offer a subsequent motion on the undergrounding after voting on the main motion. Thank you.
Why not do it now?
Madam City Attorney?
Okay, we'll go, we'll go with regular first. Okay, you're on, though. Do you have a comment on the motion? Not other than what you've done? Mr. Fox alluded to, in fact stated, that we should be cognizant of trying to find housing for our workforce workers, people. Studies have shown that those communities that do not provide housing for all spectra of their workers really don't thrive. So it's extremely important that we produce the affordable housing, one, that we need, but two, that's mandated. You know, we have a state above us, and they put out these dicta about what we should do and what we will do. So it's extremely important that we be very attentive to workforce housing and affordable housing. One of the things it does, as Mr. Fox said, was it reduces the amount of petroleum products that are used on the freeway. It produces the amount of emissions from automobiles. It produces unnecessary traffic on the freeways. And in essence, it destroys whatever quality of life exists. So we can get people off the freeways, we really accomplish a great deal. I think this is a remarkably good project. As many have said, Many Mansions has a long history of turning out a quality project. Generally, they try to work very hard with the neighbors. And I would like to say, or see, as Ms. Irwin said, that staff take a look at the idea of the meetings and meet with neighbors and see what can really evolve. But anyway, with that, I'll support the motion. Make a motion if I have a comment. None, please vote.
The motion carries four zero, and the ordinance title is an ordinance amending Thousand Oaks Municipal Code relating to official zoning and changing zoning classification of property located 2736, 2686, 2676, and 2672 East Hillcrest Drive and 2645 Los Feliz Drive, zone change Z 2008-70690.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Bill. You have a motion?
Thank you. My motion is to include the cost of the undergrounding, because it has been a top goal of the city to try to underground as many utilities as possible in the older areas, more mature areas of Thousand Oaks. Given that we've already contributed more than $5 million for this particular project, I don't see how another $50,000 is going to basically bankrupt the city. In light of the fact that we, tonight, also awarded a $53,000 contract with the Chamber of Commerce. Money is available, we just have to look for it. And I think it would really be fair if we were to comply with our goal of undergrounding old utilities and also help the neighbors basically enjoy their neighborhood a little bit more. So that is the reason why I'm proposing that we include the minimal cost of undergrounding.
Okay, thank you. Comments on the motion? Mr. Fox?
Just a question of staff. You know, we have all driven along Hillcrest. I'm just curious, is there other undergrounding that has occurred adjacent to that area?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, there's been a number of properties on Hillcrest, but I would need Public Works staff to confirm the exact neighborhood if that's actually taking place, especially with the residential parcels.
Okay, I appreciate that. Let me just get it from staff.
Good evening. I'm Mohamed Fatemi from Public Works. We did have a couple of smaller projects with a few poles, like two, three, less than five poles that have been removed, but not many of them in that area. And most of them, they were on the Hillcrest Street, not inside the private properties.
Okay, so along the Hillcrest, oh, Hillcrest Drive, we've done the undergrounding, but not?
Not in the private areas. We had a few poles that we took, that we took down.
Do you have any history of doing that? On private property, rather than a public driveway?
Oh, yeah, we have done it in the past in other areas, but not in this area. There we have done few projects.
Okay. Can you give me an example of where we've done it in other areas?
Not offhand, I don't remember any. We were going to do one around Hague Road area, the behind a couple of office buildings, new office buildings, but we went through the waiver, and we didn't do it.
All right, here's what I'd like to do, unless council's, you know, I don't think this is just something we have to decide tonight. I think we have an opportunity to take a look at, have we done, obviously, it's a council goal to do the undergrounding, that's a given. I think Ms. Bill D'Elipina makes a reasoned argument that with the money that we're putting in, $50,000 by comparison is not extreme. But I do think council needs to look at, have we done like, or taken like actions in other areas of the city? If we have, then I think there's a legitimate issue that we need to look at here to truly make this amenable to everyone. If we haven't, not to raise false expectations, then I think it's a different proposition. And we need to, we need to take a look at that relative to precedent-setting. It's a very, very expensive process, as I think everybody understands. So, and I think we also need to, at some level, recognize Mr. Mitnick's admonishment to the council, is that we do need to spend precious redevelopment dollars very, very wisely. And so, but I don't think it's a decision we have to make tonight. I think it's something that staff can study and bring back to the council. We can get more information and maybe make a more informed decision, one way or the other. I think that's probably the fairest way to approach this. So that would be, that would be my comment. I don't know if there's a motion on the floor, but, okay, that's what I'd like to do, is I'd like to, but I'm not prepared to vote for it tonight. I guess that's what I'm saying. So if the issue has to come to, to a vote tonight, I'm going to vote no, but I'll make a subsequent motion that we can bring this back, unless you want to just re-
No, I will, I will keep my motion, then you can do the subsequent motion. I'd like, because there has been evidence that other developers have been required to build underground utilities or to bury the overhead utilities, and staff-
Pardon me, Ms. Bill. Can we go ahead and have comments on the motion?
Okay.
Sounds like a sum up. Mr. Mitnick, you have a fast comment?
Yes, two points, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Just to remind you, we do have a waiting list of underground projects, about two dozen projects in the queue that are waiting for funding, because development activity in the city has slowed down significantly, and we don't have those funds. And the other point, where you typically see the undergrounding utility requirements, those are for-profit ventures, so this is a nonprofit venture, so the funding is tight. The suggestion to come back with a follow-up report, staff would be more than happy to do that.
Thank you, Mr. Mitnick. Ms. Irwin?
Yeah, I'm not prepared to make the decision tonight, but what I'd like as part of that report is just, you know, I haven't seen through any of our, any of the report, just a diagram of where the undergrounding is on the property and maybe what happened across the street. I mean, nothing that takes a lot of staff time, but just so we have a little bit clearer picture of what's going on in that neighborhood before we make a decision.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Bill. You have speaker of the motion?
Well, my preference would be to vote on it tonight, but obviously, it's going to fail, since it would be a three-one vote, and-
Could be a two-two.
Sorry, it could be, I forgot you haven't spoken yet. Sorry about that. But it could be, even if it were a two-two vote, it would fail. So what I will do then, in concert with the proposals of my colleagues, I will go ahead and change my motion to have staff come back with a report on the undergrounding utility cost and the diagram, and have a comparison to other undergrounded utilities in that neighborhood.
Thank you. Comment?
Should we put a timeframe on that, Mr. Mitnick?
Two minutes.
Not on his comments, but on the report. I would say, how long do you need? Obviously, not before the summer recess.
I thought I was compensated by the word. We could probably be back within three months, if not shorter. We can get back before the summer break, where we can take a look at that. Also, we have to look at the cost of all the utilities that have to be undergrounded, so it might be much more than $50,000. We'll be glad to do that.
At least we're making effort. So that would be my motion then. And Madam City Clerk, do I need to restate the motion, or are we okay? Thank you.
Okay, we're all right with it. Let's vote, please.
Motion carries four zero.
Thank you very much. And again, thank you very much to all the staff in Many Mansions who've worked on this project, and hopefully will. We're not eight to a yes. I'm not, I'm just making comments here. And we're going to, at this point, entertain a motion or conversation on eight, eight A2. A motion, preferably.
Yeah, I'm going to move for eight A2, recommendations one, two, and for the redevelopment agency, and recommendation one for the city council.
Thank you. Comments on the motion? None, please vote.
Motion carries four zero.
Okay, we're going to be covering nine, nine A right now, so if staff will switch chairs, we'll get going.
Hearing advertised as required by law is open to consider agenda item nine A, a municipal code amendment to modify the city's film permit standards and procedures, MCA 2008-70654. A speaker card is available for those wishing to address the city council regarding this public hearing. Three people have presented speaker cards, and pursuant to council standards, speakers are allowed five minutes each. The yellow light displays when you have one minute remaining.
Thank you very much, Mr. Ware.
Oh, there we go. Good evening, Mayor and councilmembers. Tonight before you is a municipal code amendment to consider changes to the city's filming regulations. One of the primary changes in the ordinance is to modify the written consent requirements, among other changes to the film ordinance, and also resolve a conflict in the municipal code relative to the simulated discharge of weapons created upon the original adoption of the filming regulations. Copy the proposed amendment and strikeout versions in your packet as attachments one and two, beginning on pages 185 and 190. The original film permit regulations were adopted in 1997. Prior to the original adoption, filming on private property was not regulated by the city. If filming occurred on a public street, the activity was reviewed and approved, subject to the issuance of an encroachment permit. After receiving comments from residents on the impact of continual filming was having in their neighborhoods, the city council adopted the current regulations in 1997 after two public hearings. The regulations adopted created a permit process for all filming, including still photography, with significant requirements, particularly obtaining written consent for permit approval. Over the years, the city council received concerns from citizens attempting to have filming on their properties, but were having difficulty, especially obtaining the required written consent signatures. This issue was detailed in a letter from the California Film Commission, which is attachment six of your packet on page 210. After receiving the letter from the California Film Commission, the city council initiated MCA 2008-70654 in December 2008. After initiation of the ordinance, staff prepared a draft amendment. This draft was sent to all registered homeowners' associations, the California Film Commission, the Chamber of Commerce, filming industry representatives, and citizens who expressed interest in the city's filming regulations. Staff did receive four written responses, which are attachment eight of the staff report. Significant issues raised in the written comments are noted on pages seven through 10 of the staff report. Notice that this public hearing was also sent to the same residents and businesses as was the draft ordinance. The proposed amendment recommends the following changes. The existing ordinance provides for the exemption of a permit for charitable institutions and public access exhibitions. These exemptions have been deleted from the proposed ordinance. This is consistent with the city policy on other permitting requirements of the city, such as land use entitlements, special events permits, et cetera, in which we do require the obtaining of permits with payment of associated fees for charitable nonprofit organizations. Also, filming by such organizations can still have an impact around filming locations that the city will be able to review and impose mitigating conditions. In the existing ordinance, filming hours are limited to seven AM to 9 PM unless written consent was obtained from occupants within the established 500-foot consent area. The same written consent standard was required for filming for any time during the day or night. In the proposed ordinance, the specific standard of time was deleted, and all the permit, and all the permit with any proposed time will be subject to the established written consent requirements. Filming is currently restricted to no more than three consecutive days within a six-day month period, or a maximum of six days per year, commencing with the first filming date. The standard can be exceeded with the applicant, if the applicant obtains written approval from properties adjacent to and directly across the street from the filming location. It's not presently expressly required that all persons within the written consent area approve of the extended days, causing some confusion in the ordinance. The proposed amendment removes this standard, also making it subject only to the proposed written consent requirements. The issue regarding written consent has been raised as one of the main issues of concern with the existing film ordinance, as specifically noted in the letter from the California Film Commission. The existing ordinance requires that 100% written approval be obtained for filming and still photography from an adult occupant of all businesses, from all business and residences within 500 feet of the filming location. This requirement has been described as one of the more restrictive consent requirements within the state of California. The proposed amendment has been modified, has modified the written consent standards to require an adult occupant of at least 80% of the businesses and residents within 300 feet for filming of seven or fewer days, and 100% of the same for filming of more than seven days. A sample of the potential difference in a consent area within a typical tract is depicted in attachment seven of the staff report on pages 212 and 213 of your packet. By changing the written consent standard, will now be possible that a film permit would be approved with persons objecting within the consent area, a condition that does not presently exist, as 100% written consent is required. The number of persons that would be allowed deny consent and still allow staff to consider approval of a film permit application would be based on the relative size of lots within the 300-foot written consent area. The proposed amendment also establishes a new definition for still photography and establishes separate written consent requirements. Currently, all standards that apply to motion picture filming apply equally to still photography, including the same written consent requirement. The proposed amendment modifies the written consent requirements only to require consent from adjacent properties and properties directly across the street from the location for still photography shoots of only one day. For requests for still photography for more than one day, the applicant would have to obtain written consent similar to that of filming of seven days or fewer, at the standard of an adult occupant of at least 80% of the residents and businesses within 300 feet. The amendment, if, I'm sorry, the amendment, if approved, will also require that an applicant designate a direct contact of the film company and provide that representative's contact information to persons within the written consent area, in case contact is desired with the film company to discuss issues related to the pending or ongoing filming activity. Presently, the film ordinance allows the film liaison to prohibit filming on identified holidays and Sundays within residential areas. The amendment slightly changes the prohibited days by allowing filming on Sundays in residential areas if other application requirements- if other application requirements are met. Filming on designated holidays and residential zones will still be prohibited. Another proposed minor change is the modification of language related to the processing time of permit applications required to be filed for city processing. The current language requires that a permit application be filed 10 days prior to the filming date. The proposed language is slightly changed to keep the time at 10 days, but not fewer than five days lead time for application's submittal. If an application is filed less than 10 days prior to the filming and police resources are required to be at the filming, the modified wording allows staff to deny the permit if such police resources are not available to be assigned to the filming. Some other changes for more clarity... Some other changes for more clarity is revised definition of current news, location filming, and the term "student." The definition of location filming was enhanced to also include what staging is for the purposes of defining the area of film activity location for to determine the extent of the written consent area and establishing if permits are required. In 1997, when the original film permit ordinance was adopted, it created a conflict in the municipal code relative to the required approvals to allow the simulated discharge of weapons. The film permit ordinance allowed this activity with the approval of the police and fire departments, although an existing code section required the city council approval for such activity. The amendment modifies the language in section 5-11.01(b) to exempt city council approval for the simulated discharge of a weapon if an approved film permit is obtained. Staff recommends introduction of this ordinance this evening. And I am available for any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Ware. Questions of staff? Ms. Bill DeLaupinia?
Good evening, Mr. Ware. And congratulations, by the way, on being a patriotic boss. My question is, the 80% within the 300-foot radius. Where does it say in the ordinance that that would apply to next-door neighbors? I mean, I'm wondering if your immediate neighbors vote no, but the rest votes yes, and you have your 80%. That, to me, seems not right.
I believe I understand your question, but if I miss, I'm sure you can re-ask in a way I will understand there. The 80% requirement is the totality of the 300-foot radius area. It does... The way the ordinance is proposed tonight does not create a condition where the adjacent neighbors would have a... For better wording, an automatic denial. They would be included in the overall 80% of the area and not differing... The difference isn't by the individuals, it's by the entire area. So, it'd be 80% of the total area, notwithstanding where they are within that area.
What you're saying is that your immediate neighbor, then, doesn't have veto power, so to speak? So, if the rest says yes, but your two or three immediate neighbors are against it, they're completely hopeless and helpless, correct? The filming would still go ahead?
If, in fact, that they would... If, in fact, they would get a total of 80%, yes, that would be true. The immediate neighbor, if they did not sign, but there was still 80% in the overall area, we would have the ability to approve that permit.
There is no doubt that the immediate neighbor would suffer the greatest impact of the shooting of whatever may be shot on location. So, right then and there, I'm already thinking that 80% may not be good, that maybe it should be 100%. But that would be just my opinion. Then, the second question would be... The... There were issues... There were a couple of letters in the supplemental packet from HOAs, wondering how and where would it say that HOA written approval would be required to shoot on private streets?
The way staff has dealt with that in the past and present would not change dramatically. In the case, I think there was raised in some of the letters about the use of private roads, particularly. That, right now, if filming activity occurs on the private road, if there's staging, as it's defined in the code, or there's actually filming activity on the private road, we do require the association to provide us written consent as the property owner and person in control of that property. If filming does not take place, or there's not staging activity as defined on the private road, and it's completely on a person's private property, we do not require the homeowners' association's written consent as property owner, because there's really no activity occurring on properties under their general control. It's on a piece of private property. And what we did is, when we added the staging part of the definition of location filming, we created sort of a level of impact that might occur on a private road. But I think one of the difficulties and where we would have some concerns if we just generally say that the homeowners' association has to provide written consent... There's a lot of other things the city approves that happen within private roads, such as billing permits, where, you know, we don't provide written consent from the association for construction trucks. And when we have those things going over private roads, unless there's an impact, we really feel that the consent requirements or the impacts to the neighbors and the association as a whole really isn't being impacted by the mere parking of a vehicle on a private road.
Well, it goes without saying that should there be a shooting at one property inside a house that wouldn't really impact anyone, that equipment would have to be brought in via trucks, or cars, or bicycles, or golf carts. And I find it highly unusual that any shooting could occur inside any given residence without any other additional vehicles being parked in front of those homes, parked on private streets owned by the HOA.
Once again, there's a lot of activity that the city would approve that would go on within association that we don't obtain homeowner approval for. There really... The driving of vehicles over a private street is not necessarily an impact that I think we need to have a automatic approval by the association just for merely driving vehicles over a street.
No, driving, not, but parking of the vehicles.
Ms. Obano would like to make...
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, members of staff and the viewing public. I did... We... The city attorney's office did work with Mr. Ware's office, although he carried the laboring on this. And one of the issues, and we've seen this come up, and you will see this at other issues that the city's dealing with, this is an overall ordinance that affects the entire city, not just HOAs or private streets. And some of the comments that I read were, "Our private streets, we don't allow parking on those streets." An HOA, forgetting what the city does, has the right to enforce their own rules. Our rules cover the entire city. It's... So, if we... Our definitions wouldn't cause us to get permission of the HOA. In certain circumstances, they would. But if there was someone that was going to park a vehicle, or even two, on a private street, it's not really our... The city, as we've written it, to have to go and force the film person to get that consent. If the HOA's saying, "We don't allow any parking on our streets," they can enforce their own rules. We've said that over and over. We do not enforce HOA's private rules on their private streets. That's up to them. But it doesn't... It's sort of two separate tracks, I guess, is what I'm trying to say. So, in crafting this, staff did listen to comments from some of the HOAs and try to... The whole point of this ordinance as presented tonight was to loosen the rules somewhat, but to also mitigate impacts. So, staff felt it was reasonable to write in a definition for the staging and to try to deal with that issue. But that's really stepping apart from an HOA's own private rules and their rights to enforce them. And it's like anything else. It's like, sometimes we have people come forward with a design, and sometimes they go to the HOA and they get approvals. Sometimes they haven't. But it's really... We're enforcing our rules, and the HOA can enforce theirs. So, I see them almost as two separate issues. So, hope that helps, and thank you.
Thank you. Regarding the HOA in North Ranch, don't we make an exemption... Exception, I should say, for North Ranch, where we do require that, in North Ranch, the HOA gives approval for any certain permits that may be requested?
We don't have that as a formal policy. We strongly encourage it. And that particular homeowners' association has a very active architectural review committee that looks at everything. And we advise the applicants that if that HOA, if their architectural committee's not going to approve it, they need to work with them to get the approval. But it's nothing... The people still have a right to file for their entitlements with the city. And we look at them in terms of our particular architectural policies that apply citywide, and also the special policies that may have been adopted for any particular area.
Okay. And who would have authority to grant waivers, should they be needed?
Waivers of...
This particular code. Say, the filming company collects only 75% rather than 80. And they're saying, "We need to shoot now. We're in a hurry. We've got to do it now. Can you give us a waiver?"
Well, I think the ordinance is written, doesn't... Unless I'm mistaken, doesn't provide a waiver provision for that.
Okay. I'm wondering whether we need to have one in there, simply because, just a couple of weeks ago, staff did grant a waiver without any authority in the municipal code whatsoever. And I'm just wondering, do we want to... Do we want to actually take that into consideration for any future such incidents? Should it be the council? Should it be city attorney, city manager? Should it be the community development director?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, it's your call how you want to structure the ordinance, but you have a recommended set of guidelines here. And if an applicant, a film company, wanted to do something that was not in compliance with that, we have to put on the council agenda to make a change. The reason... The situation that was referred to was done administratively because this council directed us to make revisions to the film permit ordinance to make it a little bit more flexible. And in the interim, while staff was working on that, a request came forward that would clearly comply with the guidelines in front of you tonight. So, we made an administrative decision. It was a very unique set of circumstances. Normally, that would not happen. So, it's your decision how you want to proceed. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Mitnick. Ms. Bill DeLaupinia?
I think we do need to make... Have a provision regarding that, because we don't want to have another incident like that, regardless of what the circumstances are. It should all be proper. And perhaps, if there is some dire, urgent need to finish the movie... I mean, I have no idea what the excuse would be. But obviously, we need to have some sort of provision there. And again, I'm just reminding... Just reiterating my opinion that not having your next-door neighbor approval, I'd be pretty miffed if I'd said no to a shoot, and then everybody else says, "Okay," but I'm going to be the one who is directly impacted by this. And so, that is why I'm thinking 100% within a 300-foot radius would probably be... Would be better. And it is less restrictive than the current code.
It is... I'm not sure... Well, just let me respond. I'm not sure it's all that much different, because what we've seen in the past, in most cases, the filming... At least the ones that go down to the end, and even the ones that don't actually get filmed because they didn't get 100%, they're always over 90%. And the holdouts are really the people very close to where the filming activity would actually occur. So, in essence, those people have a veto power now. And if we change the ordinance to, say, either 100% within 300 feet, or all the adjacent neighbors, plus 80% within the 300 feet, including all the adjacent neighbors, to me, that would not be materially different than our current ordinance.
To me, it is, but thank you very much. I don't have any further questions.
Thank you. Ms. Irwin?
Okay, I do have a couple of questions. I think Ms. Bill DeLaupinia does have a good point that in certain circumstances that we don't... Can't necessarily foresee that we might want to have staff be able to give a waiver if we're out on the summer... You know, we had a circumstance last year where somebody was... Had the ability to have a home makeover, and there was no council meeting. So, I don't think it's unreasonable to say in an extreme circumstance that... Or something that requires some common sense that you allow maybe John Prescott to give a waiver. But my question is... So, I think that that's reasonable to look at. My question is with still photography. First, I don't see anything in here specifically about, let's say, somebody is doing wedding pictures. Where... How do we know that this does not apply to wedding pictures in a private home?
Actually, it does not exclude wedding pictures in a private home. And so, we did think of... I know that you raised this question, I think, to staff, and we've looked at it and have alternative language to add to the definition, if that's the pleasure of staff, of the council, to not just deal with wedding pictures, because that's, you know, just one part of commercial photography. What we were really trying to do, the intent, was to mitigate impacts that are caused even from still photography. And so, there's a... And one of the things we said was bringing in extra equipment where you might have cars or other impacts. So, if you... I don't know if you want me to give you some of the suggestions that you could consider right now or not.
Well, I mean, one of the other... I was going to say another example is if... Let's say you were doing, and we could use a restaurant, if you're doing still photography of food, and there's one car there, I just don't see to have to go through the whole permit process. So, to me, there has to be a little common sense injected, and hopefully, that that's what you're going to do when you add to this.
Well, I can give you a suggestion right now, and it does take care of that. So, I don't know whether the council wants to hear that now, or...
Actually, I would like to hear it. Let's see if it covers my issue.
So, under the definition, which is if... On your strikeout version, which is on page 191, subsection E is still photography. At the very end of the section, we would add the following language after the word "services." "That will take more than four hours, period. Notwithstanding the foregoing, still photography to take place wholly within indoors is excluded from this definition."
All right, so it's four... But what about... I mean, do you want to put a maximum number of cars? Because even four hours, and if they're bringing 20 cars, then there is impact there. I'm just saying, there's unintended... There's unintended... No, there are unintended consequences, and then people aren't going to follow, I think, follow the rules. If you have... If you have... Do you understand what I'm saying?
Hold it, hold it, guys.
Hold it, hold it, guys.
Sorry, sorry, Mr. Mayor.
That's okay. Ms. Irwin, you have concerns?
I'm, I'm just saying that I think that is the appro, I'm glad you put it in there, but I think that we could just add the one thing with, you know, making sure that there's not more than a certain number of cars. So, all right, those are my concerns. Thank you.
Any other comments? None? Thank you. Ms. Fox?
I don't think so.
Let me too. We have speakers on this. Mr. Farrell, John Farrell, are you still with us? You have comments if you want to make them. Followed by Laura Papenfuss, followed by James Fitzpatrick.
My name is John Farrell. I'm a resident of Thousand Oaks. I also own Far West Locations, a location service representing properties as well as homeowners associations for filming. I want to thank the mayor and city council for considering to modify the city requirements and procedures for issuing film permits. I also want to thank Jeff Ware and John Prescott and the community development department for such a comprehensive report, which must have taken a tremendous amount of effort and time to complete. And I believe their analysis was thorough and addressed the concerns and issues in a thoughtful and sensible manner. I believe filming offers revenue opportunities for businesses, the city of Thousand Oaks, as well as residents, and can be done in such a way to minimize impact upon each community. That has been my job since nineteen eighty-one, both as the location manager for Aaron Spelling NBC, a number of other companies, and owner of Far West Locations. It can also create additional income for both police and firemen who are assigned to the film shoots. The state of California, businesses that support the film industry, and many residents in our own community and the surrounding areas that work in the industry, have been greatly impacted by the industry having to relocate to other states who are film-friendly and less costly. Over the last two years, film permits in L.A. have dropped forty percent and in Ventura County, forty-two percent. We need to not be just competitive, but also welcoming to the film industry, encouraging them to seek location opportunities in the Thousand Oaks area. Under the present requirements, there is a great uncertainty with a hundred percent signature requirement, that production will be issued a permit. With their own time constraints, they are unable to take that risk. Although some issues remain to be improved upon, such as lead time for permits and the number of signatures required, it's moving in the right direction. I applaud the community development department for their hard work and their recommendations that the amendments be approved. The film industry is a crucial part of our economy in California and here in Thousand Oaks, and we should not turn our back on it. The livelihood of many of our residents depend on it. It can be properly regulated and supervised to minimize any inconveniences. These inconveniences, inconveniences have been addressed and dealt with in other communities and can be dealt with in ours. You know, I say one other thing. I am very involved with the film community. I've been involved for a number of years, done a lot of shows, movies. I represent properties out here in this area, Hidden Valley, I am sure with Country Club, a lot of other properties. And I believe that if we continue with this hundred percent requirement and making it more and more difficult, film companies will not look at Thousand Oaks as a possible location, causing a lot of revenue loss to our community and, again, to the state. People are leaving this state because we are not film-friendly, and that's what I continue to hear at this council meeting. And as a part of the, of the film community, I wish you would reconsider that approach. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Farrell. Laura Papenfuss?
No. I'm done.
Sure, do it. That's it. Laura Papenfuss, followed by James Fitzpatrick.
My name is Laura Papenfuss. I'm a resident of Newberry Park. Thank you, Mayor Glancy, and city council. I'm standing here in support of the new ordinance for filming, being a business owner and recently having some filming done at my restaurant. It was quite an ordeal to get the process, you know, moving forward. In my scenario, my restaurant is on private property. I can see the ordinance being more strict for residential because the houses are right next door to each other and the impact of what that does to the streets for parking. And in my scenario, where my restaurant is located, everything was self-contained. We have a very large parking lot. The owner of the property was in full support of the filming, and because it was on his property, his okay, it did not impact residents whatsoever. We did, however, because of the ordinance, have to go out and get signatures. And five hundred feet is, it's a long way. I mean, it went to not the street just across from the restaurant, it went to the street across from that, and I believe it actually went to the street across from that. Those people even, didn't even have any idea that I had filming going on in the restaurant. And there are, I understand when you say you like the hundred percent, there are people who just like to say no, no to everything, regardless of whether it impacts them or not. There's just people who, who just like to throw a wrench and everything. And in my case, being, you know, with the restaurant and in the project that my restaurant is in, we've had those same people who have fought against the restaurant and that whole center being built, even though they bought their homes knowing that the center was going to be there. And they're the same people who would fight any kind of filming. So in our scenario, it did not affect the residents at all. My windows were blocked, blacked out completely inside the restaurant. You had no idea that there was any lighting or any filming taking place. We were done by the hours set forth in the ordinance. And speaking to the landlord, they wanted me to convey that the, the filming was, was great. They left the property without any damage. They did a great job considering, you know, the residents. And people do park in that parking lot just to pick their kids up at Sequoia. And, you know, everybody was, was very accommodating to them. There is something in the, in the new language of the ordinance that council member Irwin brought up about the still photography, that, that bothers me a little bit, or that, that I would like to see maybe some, some changes in the wording. For myself, I need to do some filming of, some photography of my food for advertising. And if I want to do any kind of coupons or any kind of publicity that requires any kind of still photography, I would have to go through all of this permit process. And I think that that's, you know, that seems a little bit extreme if it's going to be taken inside my restaurant and, and it won't impact anybody. So I, I would ask that maybe you look at that and maybe a little more lenient on the still photography, especially on private property. Again, if, if my landlord and the tenants that are also businesses inside my center, they don't have a problem with it, and, and they all sign off on it, I don't understand why the residents around me really have any say-so when it doesn't impact them at all. That's, that's the part that, that seems to be difficult in this because it, it, it really stresses the residential, which makes complete sense to me. But I really think that the commercial people and people that need to advertise like myself and to get the, the business that filming or even having a commercial, if I wanted to pay and have a commercial done on my business which might be inside, or if I want to do like a cooking lesson and, and maybe put that on cable or something of that nature, it, you know, it becomes quite cumbersome. Anyway, thank you very much, Jeff, for, for the new ordinance, and hopefully council will consider it and pass it because I think it's a positive thing for the city and for the revenue for the small businesses here. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Papenfuss. Mr. Fitzpatrick.
My name is James Fitzpatrick. I'm deputy director for the California Film Commission and forty, thirty-five years in the film business in Southern California. First of all, thank you for allowing me to make comments. If you all need to get up and stretch for a second, it won't bother me. I know you've been here a long time, so I appreciate your patience. I'd like to commend Mr. Ware, Mr. Prescott for their longtime work with this, this change of ordinance. On August eighteenth, two thousand and eight, my director, Amy Lemich, wrote a letter to the assistant city manager, and I quote, "Under the current guidelines, an applicant is required to obtain approval signatures from one hundred percent of the dwellings or business owners within a five-hundred-foot radius of the film location. An unfortunate side effect of any one hundred percent requirement is that it can create an environment where one resident or business can hold back on his or her approval for a price. Since this behavior is not condoned by municipalities but occurs all too often, most jurisdictions in the state require eighty or at most ninety percent approval signatures before issuing a permit. This allows for the majority of residents to voice any concerns without giving any one resident unchecked power." So that's been demonstrated several times tonight by the other speakers. It's extortion is what it is. And I don't refrain from pulling the punch on that. That's what happens, having been on the street for as long as I have. Also, I must point out that the city had thirty permits, I'm not sure how many days in two thousand and seven, thirty-two in two thousand and eight, and twelve in two thousand and nine. That's not an overabundance of filming by any means. I mean, you know, out of three hundred and sixty-five days, we're not talking a lot. So I, I don't think people should have a real cause to feel put upon. In this, I suggest that I am very in favor of most of the discussion and most of the staff's recommendations. Because we've all been here too long, I think if you jump down to, under the discussion analysis, it'll be easier than going through the, the whole revised ordinance. Under discussion analysis number B, perhaps to alleviate some concerns, instead of, you know, making that requirement a hundred percent, maybe you make it ninety percent. I mean, I know that council member Bill DeLaupinia has some concerns about that, and I will address those at the end of my remarks. But that's, you know, there's some movement there, and we appreciate the, the changes with the weapons, you know, blind firing weapons. They're not allowed to shoot loaded guns, ever. So I wrote most of the penal code for the state of California, allowing for the exemption of weapons that are blind firing. And also, you know, this is always a give-and-take thing. If, if Sunday, you know, this is always a trade-off. I mean, we appreciate your moving forward, but if Sundays become intolerable, then Sundays are off. I mean, you know, it has to, it has to be flexible. Unfortunately, for the last twelve years, it's been rather rigid and people haven't been here. And I, the case in point, Frost Nixon spent two days here. I was able to contact Greg Alpert in Panama, where he's working, and he said that he had a very, you know, he liked filming in Thousand Oaks, but he had a problem with trying to get all those signatures, and that he would tell the film office that he would never willingly go back to Thousand Oaks until they changed their requirements. Well, now we can say, Greg, they've changed their requirements. And his positive spin on it was that, I will quote, I will tell you, this is an email he sent me today, "I will tell you that because of our filming, neighbors who live even two doors down from each other, who never met, met each other for the first time because of the filming and have gone on to enjoy each other's company while forming new and lasting relationships." A true positive outcome. I mean, people get painted, you know, as the, somehow the grand Satan coming into a neighborhood, and that's not the case. And finally, I might say, lastly, you know, the fifty thousand dollars you're looking for for the underground improvements, if there was more filming here, I don't know how you rob Peter to pay Paul, but you would have some more income, and that's it. So thank you very much. Any questions, I will answer.
Thank you for being down here and all of you for sticking around with us so long. There's one statement card who's in favor of. Staff, any response, comment?
Check.
None? Okay. Ms. Fox, your hand is up.
Yeah, I think the distinction between residential commercials is a, is a good one. I think what we're going to do here is, it has to make sense. The whole issue of notification, I have, I've always been amazed at, you know, we put these, you know, blank feet, three hundred feet, five hundred feet, but there's no practical application to it. And the example that was given in a commercial center, because it's five hundred feet, you're going three residential streets over, is ridiculous. It's just ridiculous, okay? And it just make, there's no, there's no purpose to the resident or the, so I think in the ordinance, there needs to be some distinction between residential property, which of course we want stricter guidelines on, versus commercial, where there, in most cases, would be virtually no impact to residential. But because of the foot, the, the notification, you would almost always end up in a residential area with, with no impact. And I think the speaker commented that there are folks that are going to say no just for the sake of saying no. And, and I think this ordinance has to take that into consideration and do its best to prevent that. So, and I don't know, you know, on the, the four B, filming more than seven days, I don't really know what the distinction is, more or less, but I think, you know, eighty percent for, for getting signatures is, should be consistent all the way through. And I think we need to take a real hard look at the five hundred-foot requirement. I know that we reduced it in, to three hundred, and is that consistent all the way through now, three hundred?
Yes.
Okay. I'm going to defer to staff here. If we're talking about a commercial project, is three hundred feet going to contain it for the most part within that commercial project?
A lot of times, what we do with commercial projects is because some, you know, by, by their nature, some of the lots are larger, we try and to find the exact area of the filming location. Where residential, we usually take it from the outer boundary of the property line because it's really the whole property that's being used. Commercially, we usually try and locate where the filming is on the property and measure it from the actual activity going on within, within that property and measure it out that way. Sometimes, depending on what it is, you know, depending on the size of the, the commercial lot, it extends past there into residential. I mean, it's not uncommon for it to do that. And sometimes on very large lots, sometimes the five hundred-foot, even with the five hundred-foot, it doesn't exceed past the outer boundaries of that particular property. So we do try and look at them somewhat individually when we're working with large lots, but, you know, it's tough to say. And, you know, if you're filming at a small strip mall, you know, it has, it has a good impact, particularly if it's adjacent to residential, to have that three hundred feet go, you know, fairly well, fairly good distance into the residential area also.
Yeah, and is it staff's perspective that, that, that makes sense? You're doing filming in a commercial, even a small, you know...
It, it can, because...
Like, for example, the Palm Plaza, you know, something that, you know, I don't know, that, just, I'm thinking about things along the boulevard where if you're doing filming internally in that center there, it, it has virtually no impact to anybody outside that center.
In many cases, I would agree with you. It, it would have very limited impact on residential. In, in some cases, I would probably disagree that it can't have impact. You know, there is, there is some residual activity that goes along there. You have equipment trucks running, you know, sometimes generators being pulled in.
Right.
And there are, there are conditions where there, there could be an impact to the residential area. A lot of it depends on the type of filming and, you know, really the, the nature of what it is, you know, small, large. I mean, we've had very large, the Frost Nixon being a good example, that was a very large film that took a better part of an entire neighborhood to conduct, where then we have other, other film projects which, you know, are relatively small and do have minor impact. I think one would be the, the restaurant example that we had, that was fairly well-contained. It wasn't a very large crew, and the impacts were probably very insignificant. We've got no complaints about it. And we, because of the nature, we don't get a lot of complaints about filming anyway, but, and I think that's probably because of the regulations and some of the conditioning we put on projects.
Is it, is the issue with filming more than seven days, is that generally done by a more, larger production, where you're going to have more activity?
I, I think in general, yes, doesn't necessarily correlate exactly, but I think for, for a film, for any type of filming to go on for seven days, it, it would tend to be a larger...
Is that the rationale that staff has to requiring a hundred percent?
I think the rationale was that having over seven days creates at least an impression among the neighborhood that there are greater impacts for, for a full week plus of filming. You know, a few days, you know, there was probably a tolerance level.
Okay. And then the, I guess, I talked to the city attorney, the issue of still photography, that ma, that makes no sense to me whatsoever.
The biggest issue why we included still photography, and Jeff jumped in after, I'm done if you want, or included the definition the way we did it, is that you could have still photography like a wedding shoot that's nothing. I mean, there's no real impact on anyone and...
So we would not require a permit?
Right, but we need to change the way we wrote it because the way we wrote it, it did capture everything, and I'm sorry, quite frankly, we didn't think about just the wedding scene. What we were trying to capture is there are times when still, still photography are used for a commercial shoot, for a magazine, or something else, where they do bring in food, where they do bring in equipment trucks and lights. So again, we were trying to reach impacts that might be similar. The first version of this had it even more broad. We tried to narrow it down. I think we could, it sounds like we may be bringing this back to council.
I think you will.
So that's something we can work on. But again, everything we did here was trying to mitigate when there would be impacts beyond the immediate property. So I think there's ways for us to work that as well.
I think, well, what I'd like to see, and I, I do think it needs to be brought back, I don't see, this is a time-critical issue, I think staff needs to look at it from two perspectives. One is the impact it has on the adjacent property owner, obviously. That's why we're, that's why we require a permit. The other aspect is, you're the person who's having the filming done, and you want reasonable use of your property. You want reasonable use of your center and not making the, the requirements so stringent that it virtually becomes a nightmare to do something that, you know, you want to do on your private property. So I think you have to strike that balance. I think staff's done a pretty good job in terms of, like, as I said, as I was looking at four B, if you're going to be filming more than seven days, okay, that's probably a fairly big production, even a reality TV show or whatever it is, that, that might be a pretty big deal. May require a little tighter controls. But I think we need to look at it from both the perspective of the impact to the adjacent property owner, but also, you know, some private property right, you know, provision that if somebody wants to do some filming or some shooting or whatever, they're not jumping through a lot of hurdles to be able to do that. So those would be, that's, that would be my comment. And I think some of the... And I think some of the examples that we heard tonight were precisely the latter there, is requiring somebody to go 500 feet to get permission to do something in a commercial center. That just doesn't make sense.
Ms. Irwin?
I, first of all, I think the filming's seven days, I, you know, you can put up with anything for a week, but if you have, if you have, that's when I think you really affect the, absolutely you affect your neighbors. You have big trucks in there. And I think that seven days, 300 feet is fine, and 80% of 300 feet for residential is fine too. But what Mr. Ware said is true. If you're filming in a residential center, there are impacts on the neighborhood, and you only need to get 80% of people within 300 feet. So I just, I think they've thought that out. I think this does allow the flexibility that you need. I think the 80% really makes it much less onerous. I would, I think if you're going to bring it back, we really need to look at the still photography use, you know, there could potentially be an impact, so there, I think the city attorney really understood what we were saying about small productions shouldn't require any permit, and especially in a commercial center where, you know, I think you talked about less than four hours and without big trucks. I don't think there should be a problem with that. So I, to me, that's the direction I would like to see it go. I think we're almost there, if we just see the verbiage on that. But I commend you, Mr. Ware, for your outreach and for getting, you know, we're really changing things on this, and hopefully we become more friendly to the film industry and see more people coming in and using Thousand Oaks. And I think we have most of it in what was put together by staff. So if we would like, I mean, I don't know what my motion is. Do we need to, I suppose we need to come...
You ought to make a motion. Yes?
Yes, but this is a public hearing, so it might, you didn't close tonight's public hearing either, but...
It didn't. Staff, questions to staff, I believe, are over. So I will close public hearing. Okay? Ms. Irwin?
So, I think Mr. Fox would like to come back with the language for the still photography and some of his issues better addressed, and I think we can look at it there. From my perspective, I think you have it 98% there, but it would be better to see clearly what you intend to do with the still photography.
Ms. Bill Zepina?
Thank you. My concern is, I could actually go less than 300 feet. Less than 300 feet, but make it 100%, because the impact is really to the immediate neighbors. Now, I work on a TV set in a studio lot, and I drive through neighborhoods that are always, that have cameras in the street all the time. If my neighbor wanted to shoot for a week, I'd be fine with it. But there are residents in this town who don't want that kind of impact, and I have to respect that. And if we were to reduce the radius to 250 feet, maybe 200 feet even, and make it 100%, that way your immediate next-door neighbor really has, who will suffer the most impact, will have a say in this as well. And from what we have heard tonight, there really aren't that many issues, with the exception of, there were two. One was presented here tonight by one of the speakers, and then the other one was the mobile home remodeling, which almost didn't happen because one single neighbor was opposed to this. And I'd like to, the still photography, that's fine. The still photography does mention a notification of immediate neighbor and businesses also across the street. So it really isn't for one day, for a one-day shoot. And so that should be applied to a movie as well. It is really the immediate neighbor who is impacted. And yes, you know, they bring in crews, and they cook, and they have the barbecue, this, that, and the other, and who knows, maybe they cook enough for the neighbors too, and they'd be happy. But I think that we need to give more weight to the property owners that are immediately impacted by this. And I'd be perfectly fine with reducing the radius even further, but have it 100%. So that is where I'm coming from, and I know we've heard from at least two council members. But I'd like to get my input in there as well, and I would like for that to be considered as well. Thank you.
I have something I'd like to bring up, and that is on page 180 at the top of the page. We talk about the reduced amount of filming in California, and staff says, probably do because of the recession, but also by efforts by jurisdictions outside California to track the film activity. I think that probably one of the greater causes is the attitude that California has exhibited to the film industry. And I don't think we're looking strictly at recession or strictly at Nevada trying to woo these people. If we conducted business intelligently, you don't woo people away that are happy. So, anyway, that's just a comment I wanted to make. I am absolutely against the idea of 100% approval unless, unless the adjacent neighbors are part of the people that object. In that case, I think that extra credence should be taken with regards to the opinions of the immediate neighbors, because like Ms. Bill Zepina said, they certainly are the ones that are most affected. I think what we're looking at probably is a comment that's come up a couple of times, and that is the application of common sense. And sometimes when we deal with municipal codes and things like that, common sense really doesn't come to the fore. It's somewhere in the background, but it does need to be applied more. I, I'm okay with 300 feet, and if Ms. Bill Zepina supports 200 or 250, that's even better, because I think a lot of times the effects are rather minor. But anyway, I would support the motion to have staff revisit this and bring it back to us with some attention brought to some of the things that have come up. So, yes, Ms. Albano?
Since staff has to try to take what was said tonight and be able to bring something back that the council's going to want to vote on and maybe adopt, I do have a little bit of confusion between what you just said in terms of some of the other comments over the 100% or the 80%. And one of the problems we have with this kind of ordinance is, I agree, it'd be nice to have common sense, but we have to have objective standards that we can apply, especially because this is regulating in some ways a First Amendment areas. We really do need objective standards. So I'm a little bit confused about what you want us to do in terms of the adjacent neighbors. I heard you say you didn't want the 100%, but yet I heard something about, well, if the adjacent neighbors are objecting, we need to listen to them. So I'm not quite sure what that means, and I'd like, if the council can reach a consensus or give us more clarity, that would be helpful for us to bring it back.
Okay. Mr. Mitt, do you have a fast comment?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, it's important to recognize, you've mentioned only two filming situations. The industry has been very good about working with neighborhoods and adjacent neighbors, and what you're not hearing is how they tend to, in 99% of the cases, resolve issues with the adjacent neighbors. So that's lost in the discussion here. So staff, if you're not able to direct us specifically on what you're looking at, we can explore and do a little bit more research and come back with how other cities have resolved this issue. But 99% of the time, these issues are resolved on their own.
Mr. Fox?
I actually tend to agree in part with Ms. Bill Zepina. I think we need to shorten distance to 200 feet and bump up the requirement to 90%, which doesn't provide veto power. And I'm just trying to think, again, common sense here, 200 feet, how many folks are actually going to be looked at? You don't have to bat 1,000, but the majority actually have to. So that, and I think Amy is making a reasonable request. We've got to give them some to shoot at here. So 200 feet, that makes a lot of sense, because that, I think, gets to where all of us were coming from in terms of this notification, you know, to Mars, but also not the ability to just veto it outright. So 90%, I think. Let's try that.
That's a good compromise.
Claudia says that's a good compromise, so...
Thank you, Claudia. Appreciate that. Ms. Irwin?
Well, I have to go back to what, something that Mr. Fox said originally. You do have the issue of, you know, private property rights, and I don't like to see adjacent neighbors have veto power. So if, you know, if we go 90% and 200, that's reasonable. But I just think if you have a problem neighbor and a longtime feud, they should not take away the ability for you to utilize your property. So if, I won't go to 100%, but I'll go to 90 and 200, although...
I think from a mathematical standpoint, the shorter distance you make it, the less relevant the percentage is. But you, being a rocket scientist, probably already knew that.
Well, I'm thinking at 200 feet. I don't know if you have to ask any neighbors. That's...
No, I don't think so. I think, I don't think the percentage, as long as you don't have veto power, I think you're probably okay.
I think, I think 200, I don't know, what is 200 feet? Is that...
It's...
I think, but really, I think...
It's 100 less than 300?
No, but I'm saying, I think you end up asking no neighbors in that case.
You know, I don't want to get into a spitting contest here about feet and inches, but...
If I may, thank you very much.
A short comment, perhaps.
Perhaps in the Hidden Valley area, which is unincorporated anyway, you wouldn't have a problem, but most homes in Thousand Oaks are separated by about 10 or 20 feet. A lot of homes, I shouldn't say most homes, but many homes. So there will be quite a few residents there that will be notified.
Thank you. Anyway, I think that Mr. Fox's comments were right on, and staff can take those and perhaps gin up something for us. There is a motion afoot to continue. I think Ms. Irwin made it. Did you ever make the motion? I know you're talking about it.
Yes, I did make the motion. Everybody knows what it is, so...
Okay, fine. Please vote. Gee whiz.
This shows 3-1 with Mayor Glancy dissenting. Is that incorrect?
That's incorrect.
Okay, 4-0.
Thank you. Mr. Watkins, you're reporting on 10. Today.
Thank you, Mayor Glancy, members of the city council. This item before you is an update on the county-wide stormwater quality permit that's been issued to the county and the 10 cities at the end of May. The city manager suggested that it was appropriate that we do an update for the city council, given the impact of this permit, both county-wide and specifically for this city. With me on the dais, Mohammed Fatimi, our land development engineer. Mohammed is also the city's representative to the county-wide management committee. Just real quick background, we refer to this as our MPDES permit. We've got two MPDES permits within the city. One of them covers a Hill Canyon Treatment Plant, that's called a point source discharge. The other covers the general discharges within the city and covers the city's storm drainage system. Sewers and storm drains are very different, as I know council is aware, but their fundamental differences also fundamentally affect how they're regulated by the regulators. Sewer system, of course, is designed to collect contaminants, convey those contaminants to a treatment facility. A storm drain system is really just conveying storm water, and the whole point with a storm drain system is to keep the contaminants out of the system. That fundamental difference means that there's a great difference between the way the two are regulated. Couple of quick pictures just showing, you know, kind of the simplest storm drain, which is just a little street crossing. You know, in the olden days, that might have actually been a wet crossing where the car drives across the road, gets its tires wet, you throw a few pipes down, some gravel on top, and you've got kind of the rudimentary storm drain. A very different system because it's a discontinuous system throughout the city. Two quick pictures, just to show two different areas of our city. One is the old Meadow, I'm sorry, the Cano Oaks area, you know, showing all the different streets, and you show a little bit of red showing where the storm drains are, and there's very few storm drains in that area. And the next picture shows a portion of Dos Fiantos, showing that in a more modern development, you actually got quite a few storm drains. But even in that area, probably less than half the streets actually have storm drainage pipes. And again, that becomes very important, because a lot of the water that the city is responsible for and that we're trying to keep the pollutants out of is water just flowing off of private property, down streets, finding its way naturally into the streams and drainage areas. So from a collective perspective, of course, we threw in just a couple of pictures of illicit discharges, you know, the types of things that everybody can agree that we don't want to occur, the types of things we're trying to keep out of the storm drain system, both trash, some construction debris, some sort of chemicals, or maybe swimming pool waste that lands in those areas. Those are the types of things that these permits are intended to provide regulation for. County-wide permits, we received our first permit back in 1994, the second in 2000, and then we're currently on our third permit. This draft permit was initially issued in 2006, and for three or four years now, it's been under discussion, negotiation. The current program, just very briefly, is an award-winning program. It received a national award from the EPA for stormwater quality programs. It's well-structured, well-managed, has six major components, and those components are outreach, public infrastructure for industrial, commercial facilities, illicit discharge, land development, and construction. Just a couple of quick photos on that, showing public outreach, bus placards, school outreach, construction sites, erosion debris, the last one showing our library and some of the improvements we made at the library. I'm amazed that more people didn't stay. There's been several drafts of this permit, and this permit was first issued in 2006, was an extremely rigorous permit, introduced a number of items that as far as we were aware of had never been introduced in any other permits nationwide. Because of that, the permit and its impacts on the cities was elevated to the city manager's group, and the Ventura County City Manager Group formed a subcommittee and became very active in this. Our very own city manager volunteered to take the lead on this and chaired conference calls that involved every city in the county, the county CAO, Watershead Protection District, and others for over two years. Those conference calls were initially held monthly, and then bi-weekly, and then weekly as we led up to it. That committee then formed a subcommittee that included the city managers of Ventura, Simi, and Oxnard to meet with the non-governmental organizations, primarily Heal the Bay and the National Resources Defense Council. Concurrently with that, a draft tentative permit was issued, and so these negotiations continued while we were at the same time negotiating directly with the regional board for our new permit. And that becomes important because this new permit was actually issued before those negotiations concluded. And so at the regional board's hearing in May of this year, that draft tentative agreement arrived at by the city manager subcommittee group was presented to the Regional Water Quality Control Board and was then accepted by the Regional Quality Control Board. It had a couple of very important implications, and one, it removed one of the most onerous conditions from that draft permit, was what we refer to as municipal action levels, or MALs. Those are actually numerical discharge limits on our storm water. Those have been very, very expensive for the city, difficult to comply with, and had very far-reaching implications. It also clarified some of the requirements in LID, or low-impact development. And those new low-impact development requirements did find their way into our permit. Those low-impact development requirements are going to make it very difficult for developers to comply with. The Many Mansions project that was here this evening would have been much more difficult to develop, because it requires that only a 5% impervious area be allowed on development, or, I'm sorry, a discharge equivalent to 5% impervious area. The rest of the water generated from that site has to be retained on-site. That becomes difficult to do. Some of the things that you're going to be seeing coming out of this permit include additional catch basin inserts. You'll be seeing impacts on land development. Because of all these impacts, this permit has since been challenged by the Building Industry Association of Southern California. They filed a petition with the State Water Resources Control Board. They've alleged a number of things, including some procedural violations, gaps in the evidence, impacts on development. We don't know what the decision will be yet from the State Water Resources Control Board. If this challenge had not been implemented, this permit for us would have become effective in August of this year. Given that, the challenge by the Building Industry Association, we're not sure exactly when this permit will become effective. It could be as soon as August, it could be longer, if the State Water Resources Control Board sends it back to the regional board and requires them to go through the process again. So just kind of briefly wrapping up, this is an unfunded mandate. We do currently have a county benefit assessment that provides about $300,000 annually to the city. We're currently spending about $570,000 annually. The new permit's going to cost us on the order of an additional half a million dollars per year for the first year, and then go up from there. The primary components of that will be impacts on development, additional monitoring, those best management practices, or BMPs, on everything that's... There's best management practices, or BMPs, on everything that the city public works department does, so there's additional requirements on everything from landscaping to street maintenance to how we maintain catch basins, and on and on and on. And so with that, we just wanted to kind of brief the council, bring you up to speed on what's included in that new permit, let you know the next steps are the development of an implementation agreement with the county and all the other cities. A number of discussions will have to be undertaken, including who's going to pay for some of the principal permit costs, which are costs that the Watershead Protection District will bear. They're looking at various funding options, including county-wide benefit assessments, potentially a city-by-city benefit assessment. There's a state constitutional amendment that's been bouncing around at the state level to allow the formation of utilities on drainage. You know, we are allowed to, you know, we have utilities for water and wastewater, but drainage at this point is not billed out as a utility, so it becomes a general fund obligation. And we'll also be developing an LID manual over the next year or so that's going to govern how development will occur. And so with that, the recommendation that we included for council was just to direct staff to continue to work on the implementation, to monitor the situation with the appeal by the Building Industry Association, to come back to the city council with a complete implementation plan and funding when all those costs are known. So I'm more than happy to answer any questions.
Mr. Watkins, thank you very much for a very thorough report. Ms. Bill DeLaPena?
Thank you. I move staff approval.
Thomas the motion? None? Please vote.
Motion carries 4-0.
Thank you again. Okay, we've done 12A. We will go to 13A, which is a report on NLC Information Technology Communications Steering Committee meeting that was attended by me. Couple of things to report. Our money is in, to the tune of 7.4 billion. It has been awarded to NTIA and the Rural Utility Service to expand the broadband provisions throughout our country. One of the things that this committee is particularly focused on is the fact that about five years ago, the U.S. was about number one in its broadband access. At this point, we're about number 19. Our effort is to balance the play-in field, if you will, increase the use of broadband, increase the use of the computers. One of the interesting things that we participated in is a demonstration of electronic medical record-keeping, which really is slick as long as they maintain the safety issues that are involved with that. But, anyway, it's multi-access to patients' records, to those that have need to access them in a critical time. And with that, I recommend that we receive the report.
Motion carries 4-0.
Thank you. Okay, we are... Mr. City Manager, report.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, by way of follow-up, we remind, council, you heard about this Thursday's PUC meeting on the Presidential Substation, the Public Participation Meeting, it's on June 25th. And we'll make sure that the information's on the city website, for those who are still viewing, if you want to obtain more information, that'll be available. We will have staff from the city attorney's office and the community development department attend that, and they will also testify to remind council, you did take action to submit a formal protest of this project, so that's been communicated to the CPUC. We will also follow up on the undergrounding of the utilities issue that was related to the Many Mansions project. There was a comment about electronic voting, and we'll take a look at that as we go through upgrading the communication system in this chambers. The July 4th holiday is coming up, and to remind council and the public, city facilities will be closed on Friday, July 3rd, with July 4th falling on Saturday, and the community is encouraged to participate in the fireworks display, or to watch it, that we do off of Fireworks Hill. That's viewed by thousands of people every year. The next council meeting will be on July 14th, and at this point in time, three public hearings worth, or three at this point, one dealing with a single-family residence appeal in the North Ranch community, a second, the second one is the re-adoption of the housing element. We submitted the housing element to the state, and we have to make some revisions, and that'll come back to council on July 14th. And then the third hearing deals with the recreational vehicle storage issue. There's a proposed ordinance that'll come to council. That's it, by the way, city manager, follow-up. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mittnick. Ms. Albano, you want to announce a closed session?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Council will be going into closed session, conference with legal counsel, existing litigation, 1200 Newberry LLC versus the city, and this is pursuant to government code section 54, 956.8, under the same section, conference with legal counsel for Valiceto Mobile Home Estates LTD versus the city, and there will be no information that needs to be reported out. Thank you.
Thank you very much. With that, we will adjourn this meeting to our next regularly scheduled meeting, July 14th, 2009.